Ladies and gentlemen, please be upstanding for the Chairman of Monmouthshire County Council.
Thank you, members, please be seated. Before we go into the agenda, the Leader needs to say something about Aberfan disaster.
Well, thank you, Mr Chairman, and I'm sure other leaders will wish to just reflect only very briefly, but it's a very poignant time, isn't it? We all recognise that. I just wanted to state some obvious points, really, that we will never forget the horrendous event in Aberfan fifty years ago. That tragic day claimed so many precious lives, and it's still difficult for all of us to comprehend today. Our hearts go out once again to the families who lost loved ones and the community that has had to deal with such a colossal loss. We will be observing tomorrow, members, as you know, the minute silence at nine fifteen, and I'm sure all of our residents will join us in that very important time. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you, Leader. Anyone else? councillor Dimitri.
Just to associate the Labour Group with those comments, one hundred and sixteen children, twenty-eight adults, and it's important to bear in mind the survivors as well, and you hear some of their stories of some harrowing images they saw and the people trying to recover those children, that they still have nightmares about today, so it's always worth bearing in mind.
Thank you. councillor Howarth.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you, Leader, and thank you, Dimitri. Yes, a very, very sad day tomorrow, and the people of Aberfan, as where I came from up north, we actually probably supported Aberfan as what the rest of the country did. It was a coal mining community where I came from also, and the people of Lancashire were very supportive. But we should never ever forget, I think it's like the eleventh of the eleventh, the remembrance. I think it's one poignant time that Aberfan, we should never ever forget, the singless, childless tragedy this country's ever suffered. There's been no more since that with that magnitude. So, as a council, I would ask the Leader and the Chairman to actually write to the borough and give our condolences to them. I think that would be really good for Monmouthshire, Monmouthshire people, that our thoughts are with them, and they will always be with them. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Howarth. As a matter of fact, I am with Emmerich tonight. Sorry about that. Any apologies for absence, please? councillor, I could pay?
councillor Sarah Jones, councillor Sue White, and councillor Brian Jones.
councillor Petroni.
councillor James, I've forgotten your surname suddenly, George, my age chairman, councillor Pauline Watts.
councillor Howarth.
Good afternoon, Chairman. I've got councillor Marshall and councillor Frances Taylor.
Are there any on the list that we have not read out, please?
Yes, we've also had apologies from councillor Crook, councillor Harris, and councillor Dave Evans.
Thank you. Before I go to the Chairman's report and receipt of petitions, in relation to the agenda, it's my intention, because of circumstances, if I put it that way, to reverse items eight and nine. So, item number nine will come in before item number eight. Right, thank you. I know there's a, you've got my report, that's in front of you. I know councillor Anne Webb has got a petition she wishes to present to me. Perhaps councillor Webb will speak to that petition, please.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, I've got a petition here from some residents of Tinton who request that the speed limit on the A four six six in Tinton, between the lich gate of the St Michael's Church and the bend at the old station, be reduced from the present national speed limit to a maximum of forty miles an hour, or an extension of the present thirty mile an hour limit of the village to the stretch of the road specified. These reasons are put forward, that there has been a number of traffic accidents on this stretch of road, there has been a number of fatalities, and residents, visitors, and operators of local businesses are endangered when entering the road from adjoining premises. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. I'll take that petition first, please. councillor Howarth, do you want to say something, please?
Yes, Chairman, if you would like.
What's in relation to, please?
It's in relation to the petition, but more importantly, it's in relation to actually another petition about speed in Monmouthshire, about road safety. Following on from strong communities, some weeks ago now, the recommendation from that select committee was, this council holds a special seminar on speed to look at policy. We are still waiting for that date. Could anybody reinforce and let the members of the public who are watching today know when we will start to progress and look at problems around Monmouthshire, but most importantly about policy that we have, because that is so important? So, if anybody can answer that question, because another petition, Chairman, it's not good enough.
Leader councillor Fox, would you like to respond to that, please? I know councillor Brian Jones is left, he's not very well.
Now, I haven't done the update of when that seminar will take place, Simon, it hasn't been run by me as yet, but I think it would be very much welcomed by all of us. Speeding is an issue which causes real concern in every community, doesn't matter where you are, because that speeding may only be thirty miles an hour in a twenty zone, or it could be seventy miles an hour in a sixty, and everybody's got a problem as a result of that. And I think it'd be very useful for us to come together and share our concerns and look for ways that we can start mitigating some of those problems.
Thank you, Leader. Just for members to know that I did say I'm going to Emmerich tonight, depending on the length of this meeting, but quarter past four is my exit time from this meeting, so with a bit of luck, we'll conduct all the business before, unfinished talk before that time. Are there any declarations of interest, please? None? Thank you. Public open forum? No? Item five, to confirm the minutes of the meeting held on the twenty second of September last.
Move.
All agreed? Thank you very much, as carried. Sorry, comes to Hayward. Is it correction? Accuracy? That's agreed, is it? Yeah? Right, thank you. Any other items for accuracy on the minutes of that last meeting, please? No? If not, is there actual note, the actual list of the last meeting? And I think councillor Greenland might want to say something about the Velathon, do you, or?
Yeah, thanks, Chair.
Sorry about that, but I know you had discussions later.
No, that's fine, you're quite right. I have actually emailed members in the meantime, but I will nevertheless update council officially now, that following discussions with the Velathon organisers Run For Wales, they have agreed that next year there will be a rolling road closure for the Velathon once it comes to the professional race. The effect of that will be that the road closures will be much less than they have been in the previous years, and then there will be a period of maybe twenty minutes, half an hour, when the roads will be closed just for the professional race to go through. The other thing to mention is that they will be running a shorter race, I think it's one hundred and ten kilometres, it doesn't sound that short to me, but anyway, one hundred and ten kilometres, and instead of turning right at the Nanty Dairy junction, they will be turning left along the A four oh four two and down and out of the county, south of Pontypool. I have spoken to the local member whose ward that is in, and he is agreeing with the proposal to move forward with that. I have also been in touch with Run For Wales, who will be engaging with businesses and others on that route at an early stage. So, with that, Chairman, that brings members up to date and gives certainty for the Velathon of two thousand and seventeen.
Thank you for that information, councillor Greenland. The next item is item seven on the agenda, and it's the minutes of the meeting of the Audit Committee, which is held here in this chamber on the fifteenth of September last. I'm presenting these because I chaired that meeting. councillor Easton?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Before we present them, I've got to express some disappointment that the Audit Committee didn't meet some weeks ago. There has been a tendency, I think, to find that the Audit Committee has become sparse on agenda. I don't know why, is stuff slipping through the net? I think there are matters which have been rolling forward in terms of action points which were due for questions which I put forward, questions which other members put forward in relation to aspects within the realm of audit. I'm rather concerned that we've now got to wait till the end of November, I think it's the end of November, before we can look at getting any answers. But all in all, perhaps the chief executive could look at the situation as to why the Audit Committee seems to have at times a sparse agenda, and I think an agenda which really is being driven by members' questions within the committee, such as Raglan toilets and bus routes and things like that. Thank you, Chair.
Could I say before chief executive comes in, is the determination of the Chairman, Mr Philip White, that there was no meeting? Chief Executive?
I'm very happy to have a look at that. I'll arrange to have a conversation with the chairperson.
Thank you for that. Item ten, it's the Standards Committee report. councillor Edwards, would you like to present this report from the Standards Committee, please?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I'm delighted to...
Sorry, Mr Chairman, I think item nine may have come on a separate cover for the zero hours.
Sorry, you're right. I'm taking through the orders, they are. Can we now revert to, sorry, I appreciate what's just been said. We did agree to take item nine before item eight, so item nine is zero hour contracts and is a response. And councillor Murphy wants to say something about this before officers come in, I think. Councillor Murphy.
Yes, thank you, Chair, and I've been collecting some information together, which is in addition to that, that was put in the report, and I think it's probably better for me to pass this information on to members now to possibly better inform them as to what they might like to discuss. The report says that a, so new guidance came from Welsh Government. In fact, it came out on the twenty fifth of September, so it's only a couple of weeks old. And it was guidance on what should be contained within non-guaranteed hours contracts. And I use that term because that's the term that they use. Might having said that, Welsh Government have got their own problems at the moment with regards to that with their contractors, but that's a matter for them. We found that we already complied with virtually all of it. There are some small discrepancies which we're now investigating and ironing out, and we will be, within the shortest possible time, completely compliant with that guidance. But I would say that we were already compliant with the previous guidance. These contracts, non-guaranteed hours contracts, are absolutely essential to allow services to function in the way that they do. And members would have had the list of where these particular contracts apply, and it's particularly the youth service and leisure centres, the supply teachers, various things like that, where the bulk of it is. And these services wouldn't be able to exist without these arrangements, which are course of arrangements between the authority and the individual's concern. This is nothing which is imposed on the individual. And in fact, if the practice ceased, as I say, so would the services. Contractors, if we have regard to the motion, which is the other item on the agenda, would inevitably be too expensive, and there would be reduced care provision, just simply because their costs would go up dramatically and they would be looking to pass that on. These are as and when required type contracts. But if this was start to look regular, then that automatically triggers a review. That review looks to whether the status of that individual's engagement with the authority should be changed, and if it's found that it should, well, then it is, and if it's determined that non-guaranteed hours system still applies, then those individuals will start to accrue other benefits that people on an alternative contract enjoy. Other authorities, as well as Welsh Government, also have non-guaranteed hours arrangements. Newport has a greater percentage than us, and as regards Newport, they were kind enough to issue us with a statement as to their arrangements, and it's very short, I'll just read it out if you wouldn't mind, Mr Chairman. It says that Newport City Council does not offer zero hours contracts. However, it goes on to say, however, we do offer casual contracts with no mutuality of obligation, which is exactly what these contracts are. Casual workers have a right to refuse any offer of work, as do ours, are not expected to be on call and are able to undertake work with other employers, as are ours. It's a flexible arrangement that means an individual can say if they wish to work or not, and allows the council to meet extra demand for services. The council uses this type of contract only when there is a specific need, and as I say, so do we. As regards the percentages, they currently have six hundred and fifty-five casual position occupancies, which equates to nine point eight four percent of their workforce. And, all right, it's a larger authority, but if we look at it on a percentage basis, that brings it within context. So, nine point eight four percent of their workforce is casual. However, their leisure provision is transferred to a trust and is not included in that. In the figures that I distributed to members, all of our leisure centre people are included. So, there is a very considerable greater emphasis upon these types of contracts in other authorities than there are within this authority. Last point I'd like to make there, Mr Chairman, is to underline the fact that all of our staff that fall within this category are in the payroll and all suffered the appropriate deductions. So, I hope that puts things in context.
Thank you. I remind members that is a response to the motion put forward by councillor Frances Taylor at the last meeting, which was a request. councillor...
Yeah, councillor... I'm glad you mentioned councillor Taylor's name. If you go back to the action points on the agenda there, it says about councillor Taylor. Councillor Taylor did actually have a meeting with Sally Thomas of HR and asked for some additional information, which is being collated for her and will be supplied to her quite separately, because she's not at this meeting. So, just to underline the fact that as an action point, that is being dealt with.
Thank you. councillor Petroni.
Yes, Chairman, thank you, and thank you councillor Murphy for that response. It was lovely to have all the information about Newport, but considering I'm Monmouthshire councillor, I don't really care. I care about the people in Monmouthshire and the workers in Monmouthshire. Newport is Newport's responsibility. But what I want to focus on is the kind of jump in zero hour contracts this council has overseen, or the Conservatives have overseen in the last two years. In two thousand and thirteen, when the Labour Group first raised this, our concerns about zero hour contracts and first tried to deal with the issue, I was informed that we had one hundred and forty zero hour contracts. The latest information tells us it's three hundred and eighteen. So, it's more than doubled in the last two years. But apparently, if you've just heard that statement, it's just because of as and when, casual staff, we tried to, if there's regular hours, then they're given a normal contract. But suddenly, we've had a surge of over double in two years. And my, I have no kind of thorough research onto this, but this is a result of cuts. A result of cuts, and just relying on more casual staff that we can use and then chuck away as and when, because we have made more and more service cuts and staff redundancies in the last two years. It's really starting to hit home. I'll give you an example. We've had, we've got people on zero hour contracts in My Day Assistant Workers, three of them, My Day My Life, which is a great project, but sick staff there on zero hour contracts. We've had a surge in teaching assistants. There was one in two thousand and thirteen, now there's sixteen. So, suddenly, teaching assistants were just, we all know that school budgets have been cut by the Conservatives over the last two, three years consistently, and now teaching assistants are becoming more and more kind of zero hour contract. We need you because we've got no one else, the budget is tight. That is the reality we now are living in, and if we carry on down this path, in two years it will double again. So, who is paying for this? It's always staff, it's always the lowest paid staff, and the Conservatives just don't care.
councillor Debbie Blakewell, and then the leader councillor Fox.
Thanks, Chair. Yes, I too would like to thank councillor Murphy for his response. I think what's happened is councillor Taylor brought this to us to look at, because it is good practice to monitor our zero hour contracts, and for that, that has happened now. As councillor Petroni is saying, it's interesting to hear what's happening with the Welsh Government, it's interesting to hear what's happening in other authorities, but actually with Monmouthshire, I just want us to do the right thing. And for that, I'm not really that bothered about comparing bad practice against bad practice. I saw the report, and I'm aware that other information has come through. For me, it's a policy with some figures, and there needs to be a deeper analysis, looking at specific cases. When you're looking at appropriate use of non-guaranteed hours arrangements, sometimes it is good because it's flexible for the worker and for the organisation. And I use the word worker because that's what they are, they're workers, they're not employees, with all the benefits. Set up for the just-in-case scenarios, relief workers, just to step in at the last minute or for specific projects such as summer schemes, I have no problem with that at all. Yes, three hundred and eighteen zero hour contracts, that's nine percent. Now, there's various HR organisations and boards that look at acceptability, and they suggest about five percent is the acceptable average, and we are nine percent. And you know what, as a public sector, we should be well under the five percent, so clearly there is an issue. When I looked at page three, looked at the, page four rather, of the policy, it looked at sort of a criteria or a definition when there needs to be a change. So, I'll have to read this. If regular hours have been worked over the preceding three months, and there is a continuing need and requirement for the hours to be worked on an ongoing basis, consideration will be given to whether it would be appropriate for the organisation to change the arrangements to something more permanent. So, we can have all the flexible hours, a dip in, dip out, but when somebody is working, for example, four hours per week or more, continuous period of three months or more, then at that point, they should review it. Now, this should come up naturally in appraisals and supervisions, because at that point, they're no longer casual. I am aware of a handful of people who have worked twenty hours, sometimes more, and have been doing so for the last couple of years. That is not casual, they're still on zero hour contracts. Though, that's the detail, that's where we need to kind of look at that. And a little concerned that these things aren't being flagged through the appraisal system and the supervision systems. We definitely need to review this. I am a little concerned, because if you look in the future in terms of what's happening to the leisure services and the idea of the new model, which is, we're looking and we're exploring possibly to agree to provide leisure services through a social enterprise, as an HR person, I'd be sort of questioning, could this be kicked into the long grass for a while? Because obviously, when you're two being staff from one organisation into another, if they're on zero contracts, it's a heck of a lot easier and a heck of a lot cheaper for the organisation. So, I'm hoping that doesn't have an impact on how you take this forward for these individuals. So, when I'm looking at this and I'm asking the Conservative Lib Dem administration, are you confident and satisfied that none of the three hundred and eighteen zero hour contracts have worked regular weekly hours over a period of more than three months as part of mainstream position? I'm not confident, I'm not happy, but it's over to you now.
councillor Fox.
Thank you, Miss Chairman, and can I thank Phil and officers for the work in helping us to get a deeper understanding of this? I think there was, in the partial debate we had last time, I think it was clearly recognised that it was important to recognise that the invigilators and other groups that wouldn't be expected necessarily to be on something different to this. I was quite pleased in some ways, but recognise there's more work to do in the guidance, but we are heading in the right way. And I was also reassured by what Phil said about the triggers for assessment, that there is a constant eye on people who may start a work pattern which requires us to review their situation and to alter their contracts accordingly. I won't take lectures from the Labour Group, a Labour Group who, whose many authorities across Wales in many cases still can't provide a living wage, something that this conservative-controlled council is putting in place, has in place and will continue to do so. I will not take lectures when there are Labour authorities around the country who are not complying anywhere near with the guidance, perhaps, into the levels that we have. And when the Welsh Government themselves, the Labour Government, I must stress, the Labour Government, cannot even get their own house in order with this, as you saw on the BBC news just a couple of days ago. I am extremely supportive of our staff here, they are our greatest asset. We absolutely recognise the importance of individuals, and I am pleased that our guidance and our steps toward delivering the guidance, against the guidance, is actually putting everything in place that should be in place to make everybody, put them in as fair a position as possible. There are individuals who clearly wish to have these sorts of contracts, we have to recognise that as well. That is really, really important. So, Mr Chairman, whilst I know there will be people trying to make political issues out of this, the reality is we are doing what we can, we've got further work to do. I believe our response to the guidance and the principles and guidance is pretty strong. We still work with JAG and our union colleagues to make sure that we bring forward the extra enhancements we need to do to our policies, to make sure that we are absolutely compliant with the guidance. Where we can stretch beyond that guidance, that's great too, let's look at how we can do that as well. I think Phil made some also, some good points which relate to the potential motion as well, because clearly, you know, the motion, and I don't really want to debate that now, but it is demanding that we do not employ people on these situations, in these situations. Well, clearly, if we were to turn those off straight away, we'd have masses of our services which are no longer deliverable. Where, how would we provide domiciliary care in many areas? How would we provide some of the services we're providing? There is an awful, awful lot of things which would be a threat if we were to put in place that motion, which we'll get to, no doubt, in a moment. So, once again, thank you, Phil, for providing the information. We'll work with our colleagues in the unions and JAG to make sure that we can actually improve, actually, on the principles and the progress we're making against them.
Thank you, councillor Fox. councillor Watts, and then councillor Morley Power.
Thank you, Chair. It was just on the point of individuals working self-employed, this myth that in some way, they help themselves. The actual stats present themselves and have done the last couple of weeks, that self-employed people have never been so poorly paid, since... self-employed people have never been so poorly paid since 1995. And, and it, this is all a contributor to the low wage economy that we see, that's served up by, on a national level by the Conservatives, where we have high employment, and yet we have increasing poverty. And it's because so many people are employed on zero hour contracts. So, so we, you know, the Labour Party is right to challenge that, and the best the Tories can come up with is an argument about semantics. It's pathetic, Chair.
Thank you. Counselor Maureen Power.
Thank you, Chairman. Well, I can only say that, oh, many years ago, when I was on my own with three children, I was very glad to have work that I could go to as and when it was available, and as and when I could take it, because I had a, had a, a very small paid job, which was part-time, and this extra work as and when suited me fine, and enabled me to bring up my children. And I don't think that if you take this away, there'll be a lot of people who will be in difficulties from other reasons. And I'd like to say that most self-employed people are running their own businesses, they're not being paid as self-employed, they're employing themselves.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Power. Um, I've also got Counselor Kevin Williams, Counselors Simon Howarth and then Counselor Murphy, but the Chief Executive wants to say something about this at this moment in time.
Chair, I'm certainly not looking to stifle the, the conversation for, for members, but I, I thought it might just be helpful to offer you, um, perhaps a suggestion. Um, I, I've been fortunate enough to, to, to meet and work with lots and lots of councils over the years, and I've never met one that wanted to exploit any member of a workforce. You, you care about these things, I carry statutory responsibilities around it, they're personal, they're indivisible, um, and they're wrapped up within duty of care legislation. Um, I, I'm perhaps offering a, a link to a comment that Counsel Eason made a few moments ago. Um, I'm really happy for perhaps the Audit Committee to let, to, to take a look at the detail of this. I think there are some, 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 I think there are some groupings of, of contracts here that, that possibly make sense to, to, to be the way that they are. But I guess the, the only true way to, to give you confidence that you have a workforce that is with you on the terms that they want to be with you on, is to check them out. I think when you factor out some, some reasonably obvious groupings, we're, we're down possibly to a couple of hundred individuals. That's not a lengthy and an exhaustive operation, just to check that out. So I guess, Chair, what, what I'm suggesting to be forward, turn the, the, the conversation to the chamber, that when I have a conversation with Mr. White, I'm, I'm more than happy to suggest that the Audit Committee take a particular interest in, in, in this matter, and perhaps through that work, satisfy you, that your work, well, actually, satisfy me as well, that, that your workforce and my workforce are with you on terms that they are comfortable being with you on.
Thank you for that. Counselor Kevin Williams.
Thank you, Chair. Just to go back to, um, some of the things that the leader said, I think you should have given me a briefing on this, because I can't remember half of it. Um, you did say about the issues the Welsh Government have, I believe the Welsh Government's issues are with their contractors, it's a security firm stroke cleaning firm. Um, you did also say that you don't believe we should be going down the route of the motion following against our suppliers, because you wouldn't be able to afford to employ them, we'd have issues, maybe Welsh Government got the same issues, I don't know. But it's of no great concern to me, that isn't. You also said that, um, how would we provide domiciliary care, you know, if we were to do away with these things? For me, the answer's quite simple, by paying the staff a decent wage with decent terms and decent conditions.
Absolutely.
Um, last time, when this cropped up, when we looked at it, we put a, an amendment to, uh, the motion when it first came out, that where they were being exploited, we would remove their use. Counselor Blakewell, I wish she was there last time, because she might have been able to persuade her colleagues on the back row to have gone with that, um, amendment for us. She summed it up quite perfectly when she said, people who work in, um, 20 hours a week for X amount of weeks and go into in the future, that isn't a flexible zero hour contract, that's a permanent property contract, where they do have regular hours, and we should be looking to remove people from these, um, abomination contracts to, to something a little bit more secure. So I'd be quite happy to go along with what Counselor Blakewell said, and maybe we should be looking to, having a look at these contracts, seeing who's on them. Some of them I can accept, you know, they're, they're, um, they're there for people who find them useful, but if there are people who don't find them useful, who are being exploited, I still think we should remove them. I won't bother putting another motion, because it'll only get voted down by, you know, the gang or whatever. So it's pointless, but my opinion of these things is, we should seriously look at them, and where they are being exploited, work to remove them.
Counselor Howarth.
Thank you, Chairman, and just to answer to Counselor Williams' question, I'm sure it was the back who brought this to the attention of the, uh, the council. I'm sure it was an independent member in the independent group, so, sorry, Kevin, um, we may support you sometimes, but we didn't support you on that one, but we did bring to the attention of the council. Would I just like to follow on from the Chief Executive's, um, uh, answer to Counsel Eason's proposal there? Could I bring a motion forward then?
Um, we're not dealing with Counsel Eason's motion at this moment in time.
No, 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 no. I, I, the recommendations here today are, counsel considers the information provided. After considering that information, we believe that, following on from the Chief Executive's, um, summing, that actually, we believe that, that is quite rightly, that the Audit Committee take a look at this, and then in four months' time, come back to this council, because it's going to keep coming up and coming up, give them time to collate the information, and gives us time then to look at where we are, and bring it back to this council in four months' time, let's say February, and, um, we can have a thorough and proper debate about it then, because if we don't, it's going to keep coming up, and we're going to end up with going over the old ground. Questions are being raised, information's being supplied, I think it's good on officers that they can answer them questions, there'll be emails up and down, I think it's council need to look at this after the Audit Committee have, have viewed it. That would be my motion or my request from today's meeting.
Counselor Howarth, you're making that proposal, you, could you leave that till the end? I'll come back to you.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Greenland.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Um, I think we can, everyone in this chamber, agree that zero contracts, as has been, um, made fairly common in the news over the last year or so, in other words, contracts which require somebody to be available at the employer's times and where exclusively, um, on a part-time or casual basis, we would all abhor those sort of contracts. We would not have them in this council, um, and I think we can all agree with that. I would hope we could also agree that there is a need within every organisation to have casual workers, and we need to have a system which allows casual workers to be a part of the workforce. Um, I also just want to point to Counselor Murphy's statement, and the fact that this council is already, um, complying with the Labour Welsh Government's, um, guidelines on these contracts. A couple of points which weren't, we weren't complying, we're doing it. So we are ahead of the game. I also just want to make reference to the Chief Executive's comments on the Audit Committee, and indeed by Counselor Howarth as well, and I think that's a, a sensible way forward, because unless we know, um, exactly all the contracts that are involved, uh, we can't really, uh, decide whether we've got a problem or not. And I would certainly support those views. But I think that this council has been, has shown that we are not a council which takes advantage of our employees, we comply with the new requirements already of the Welsh Labour Government, um, and if other councils followed our lead, then there wouldn't be too much to complain about.
Thank you, Counselor Greenland. Counselor Murphy, um, if, if, if you're going to do the summing up, I'll go to, oh, sorry, Counselor Eason, do you want to speak?
Ten minutes, yes.
Counselor Eason next, then, please. Because Counselor Murphy's going to sum this up before we go to the proposal, I think, of Counselor Howarth.
Okay, thank you. Keep the best to last, hopefully. Um, in relation to the report, I also wrote to, um, I emailed Ms. Harry and Ms. Thomas. I got no acknowledgement of that email, I would expect at least to add an acknowledgement by now. I posed several questions based on the, uh, on the report leading, uh, appended by the jobs which you're talking about. Uh, my initial assessment was that the report, uh, has got little substance in the report that can be disseminated, there's little meat on the bone. Um, I also, I understand the position of 67 invigilators, and to some degree, I understand the, the position of the, what was the other ones, the supply teachers to a, to a certain point, because they've increased, which I think says to me, there's a problem with supply teachers if they've increased in numbers as the teaching assistants do. The question that I asked of, um, of the, the two officers was, who is the owner of these posts? What direction are they based in? Are you able to break down the post into those areas and location? Now longer these posts being filled in the manner that you described? Also, based on your guidance, why have many of these positions not been made regularly contracted or permanent posts, as Counsel Blakewell and others have said? A general question I asked them, for example, I asked, what is the difference between a bar stroke catering stroke casual stroke reception stroke person descriptions? And also, what difference between a custodian, part-time custodian, relief custodian? And also, it'd be important to determine whether your managers have different perceptions of their staff. Equally, what does a post of catering or visitor assistant mean? Uh, for example, it says 600 hours, does it mean, uh, one person for 600 hours or 10 for 60? Probably not, it's most probably two for 300. Now, surely, that particular job should not be on there as a casual job, 300 hours is 300 hours, it's quite a fair amount of work, which should have been made permanent even before it went on this sheet. Um, as I noted above, there's lack of clarity in how these positions are determined. Um, I put my motion forward, which will be discussed later, not on the back of expecting this, this to be discussed today, because I wasn't sure it would be, but I put my motion forward in a, in a, in a different way, and maybe we'll come to that next. But regarding this, this particular aspect of it, I found that there's been, uh, it says there's no, there's no obligation on a casual basis, but I'm concerned with discrimination, that there'll be fair arrangements in place, again, I'm concerned with discrimination. There are a few non-guaranteed hours, which I've just illustrated, and there's been no uh, way to regularise the hours after a period of three to four months, as again, members have said. So there should be a realistic way, realistic way forward on, 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 on working rotas without any discriminatory, uh, actions, which I believe is a potential problem, I'm not saying it happens, but it's something that could happen. Uh, yours, it also states in the report, uh, there would be some assistance for those who have been discriminated on a basis that they've had to get extra care in, but there's no indication of what the travel costs would be and what the care, care charges that they would be able to claim would be. Um, and I'm also concerned about the fact of cancelling work at short notice. So all in all, I, I'm not making a political football out of this, I think it's our staff we've got to look after, not the politics of, of, of what it's, what, uh, what it's about. Um, and I think, I appreciate the comments that the Chief Executive made, I believe that we should look at this in a, in a more depth, in a more, uh, in a greater depth, because we could spend an hour a year all saying slightly different things and not coming up with a cogent answer. So that's where I stand in this, I believe that there's not enough meat on the bone, the jobs that are being processed should be determined in, in more blocks, and I think that could, as, to save a lot of discussion, they go to the Audit Committee. Thank you, Chair.
Before we go to Counselor Murphy, could, could some, would someone explain the 600 hour situation that Counselor Eason referred to, please?
I can tell you what the, you explain it.
Oh, okay. Counselor Murphy.
Thank you, Chair. Um, as I said earlier, um, Counselor Taylor has asked some additional questions, Counselor Eason has now, uh, told us about a, a lot of questions that, that he's asked. It strikes me that there is a straightforward way forward here. Um, if we agree to the suggestion that's been made by the Chief Executive, that we have, uh, all of this referred to the Audit Committee for them to do a thorough report, and then bring that back to this council, strikes me that that's far more constructive than any other way forward here this afternoon. Um, on the basis of, of, of that, uh, I would wonder whether Counselor Eason would be prepared to, uh, withdraw his, his, uh, his motion, so that it could be properly discussed by the Audit Committee and come back in a, in a more complete manner, uh, so that the council can debate it properly.
He shook his head. Um, Counselor Howarth, you, you want to make that proposal, please?
Yes, thank you, Chairman, thank you, everyone. Um, the proposal is, the motion is, that the Audit Committee look at the zero hour contracts within Mammashia County Council, and a report is produced. That report then is to present back to council at the earliest time possible.
Happy to second that, Chairman.
Sorry, but I, could you repeat that last bit, please?
To present back to council at the earliest time possible?
From the Audit Committee?
Yes.
Right, fine, uh, and I seconded by Counselor, um, Peter Fox. The Chief Exec, Chief Exec just informed me that it could be a recommendation of the council, that the Audit Committee deal with this, and, uh, then report back as, as suggested. So Counselor Howarth's proposal is the Audit Committee deal with this, just seconded by Counselor Peter Fox. All those in favour, please show. That's carried. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, does then the, uh, the, the motion has to fall then in, in relation to, to that?
No, Chair, no.
Well, I, I can't see how the, the motion can go forward, because we can't, uh, we, we just agreed as a council to discuss it further and have all the information back to then actually address something like a motion.
Counselor Eason, do you want to respond to that?
Yes, Chair, uh, my motion is antithesis of zero hours contracts, not directly to them, it's what could come out of them. So I believe the motion should be brought to you, I believe the council should hear what I've got to say, and if you feel then at that state that that could go to the Audit Committee as well, I'm happy with that, but I believe that I want to make, I want to make the comments I, I want to make in my motion.
Okay, you may, Chief Exec needs to say something at this moment in time.
I was just going to say, I think Counsel Eason has every right to, to talk to his motion, and then make a decision about whether he wants to take it forward or perhaps defer it to, to another point.
Counselor Eason? Or, sorry, Counsel Clark.
Chairman, if, if Counsel Eason is going to go ahead with this motion, I will have to declare an interest. My company is a contractor to this council, and I obviously cannot take part in the debate, I'll leave the chamber.
Thank you, Counselor Clark. Counselor Eason, once Counsel Clark has left the chamber, please.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I won't read my motion, I'll read, I'll take it as read. My concern, uh, as I say this, I think that's the right word, antithesis of zero contracts, is that, um, I'm concerned of, of us employing staff, I'm not saying we do, employing staff on, say, 16 hours a week, then creating an artificial irregular, irregular work rotor, say, one day, one week, one month in advance, rather than a balanced rotor where staff have consistency of, consistency of employment, then using the opportunity to vary these hours at short notice, for example, send them early, or bring in early starts, or sell, or, or catching up later, then using the balance of either way to pay off any salary shortfall in hours worked or due to work at no extra, at no extra payment, uh, and therefore no extra thing we may make for such disruption, is held, it is held over credits or debits in contracted time. I don't believe this is acceptable, and I don't believe that Mammashia County, Mammashia County Company should entertain such contracts. That is the substance of my motion, which is not directly a zero contracts, but it does find a way around zero contracts, which can be exploited in a different form of contract. That is why I want to retain the motion, so that the council hear what I have to say, rather than let it be rolled on as not being understood. Uh, I believe, uh, on that basis, if, if other members wish to speak, that's up to you, Chair, but that is where I stand, and I believe, yes, that could go to the audit as well.
Okay, you made that clear, is there a second to that, please? Counselor Petroni?
Mr. Chairman, just for, just for clarity, really, I mean, it, it, the usual convention is for us to address the motion before us, and Tony's given a, a deeper analysis of what he meant, which doesn't really, doesn't really reflect in, in, in the motion, and we're asked to discuss this one here, and as it's written, I mean, I don't know what a flex contract is, um, I'm only assuming it's a terminology, it's not one we've used so far. Um, there are various, uh, elements in here which I, I, I'm not quite understanding, but the key, key clarity I wanted, it, what are we going to be debating? Because the motion is as written, um, it, I think it would be very useful if we have got a different motion to this, that Counselor Eason can capture that more succinctly, so we can, we know really what we are actually, um, voting on.
Counselor Eason, the, the, the motion is here, and you, you did, uh, go into some detail about different things. This is in fact the motion, um, and you've got a second for it, you will, you will, you will be entitled to, um, sum up at the end. So, uh, Counsel Petroni, you seconded, do you want to say anything? No? Anyone wishes to speak on that, please? Counselor Howarth? Howard, sorry.
Thank, thank you, Chairman, I'm a little bit wary of getting up, because I, in a way, I'm admitting some
Thank you, Chairman, I'm a little bit wary of getting up because in a way I'm admitting some ignorance. I still don't understand from what Tony said in his introduction what a flex contract is. So I'm rather loath to vote for against anything that I don't understand and I wonder if it might be helpful on that basis if we could have a, maybe this presented at a future meeting with a bit more background information rather than essentially what is Tony's opinion.
Councillor Murphy.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Would it be in order for me to repeat the request that I made just now? Councillor Easton has given us a whole list of effective statements about practices that he believes may or may not be going on. I certainly have not had the opportunity of researching that because I didn't know what they were. I think the way forward is what was suggested before and has just been agreed, that we go to audit where, as a member of the audit team and audit committee and whether he was or not, he could still do it. He can make all of those points and have them thoroughly investigated.
Appreciate it, it would put all, everything in one bag and the audit committee are quite capable, I believe, of determining which might be the best way forward. Councillor Easton, just want you to agree or not on that?
I have no problem with the determined route of my motion, but for those who don't understand flex contracts, they are, employ somebody for sixteen hours a week, then flip-flopping arrows just to suit your contract, people won't know where they are and where they're coming and going. That's the top and bottom of it in my plain language. I think that Kevin might have more knowledge of flex contracts than myself, but yes, I'm happy for it to be discussed as part of the package into zero hours contracts and how it implemented. Because this really is an antithesis of zero contract with people having hours of work that are being flip-flopped about.
Do you want to refer this to the audit committee?
Yes, no problem.
Right, fine, that's what we're looking for. Councillor Howard, do you want to say something, please?
Only that, obviously, one of our fellow councillors there, Peter, has got up and left because he's announced that he's employing people that have obviously contracted or his company has contracted to the local authority. And I'm still kind of unaware, even though the question was raised at the last full council, how many people in and around the county or families' income relies on them being employed by an employer that effectively has the majority of their contract borne out by the local authority? That should be an important consideration, not only to the local economy but to the welfare and social welfare really of our community. But I haven't really seen any information here. And I have raised the question before with social services about, you know, how many carers, I mean, Peter said himself, well, you know, we couldn't afford to employ these people. How do we know that? How many people are actually employed by these companies?
Chairman, I didn't mean...
Councillor Fox, you want to...
Sorry, yeah, I was just going to clarify, I wasn't saying that we couldn't afford them, I just felt that if we were to demand that those customers, contractors we currently use didn't have these, suddenly where would our workforce come from?
Chair, I didn't quite finish, I guess what I'm trying to work around is the ethics of that. And for us to kind of, if we're trying to have a kind of holistic approach or be clear about what we're addressing here, we have to know how bad, how big the situation is. I see nothing here, there's nothing here. And to be fair, you know, the officers have had ample opportunity to go away and try and extract that information. It certainly hasn't been provided by the cabinet, so what are we to do?
Councillor Howard, can I say, councillor Easton is quite content for this thing to be, this motion, sorry, to be debated by the audit committee. And a number of us know what the chairman, which is not myself, what the audit committee is like in terms of getting information that he needs. And so councillor Easton, do you want to make the proposal that this goes to the audit committee, please? And if I second it, we go to the vote on it.
I'll make an addition to the motion or an amendment to the motion, there's another sentence put on that. I will also...
You want to amend it?
Slightly amend it to do what you want to do. Services of Monmouth County will also not employ such conditions and move this discussion to the audit committee for determination.
No, I think it's...
How can you do it?
Councillor Fox or councillor Green?
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, I thought we'd got to a position, I actually thank Tony for agreeing that he felt that it was sensible for us to discuss his issues as part of the wider debate in the audit committee. And when we have that deeper understanding that we could debate it further back here in due course in line with the recommendation the council just took, it looks like now we're taking a different path and I'm just getting really quite confused.
Councillor Easton, can I just say this, just bear with me, please? You were on the audit committee as am a few more members in this room at the moment. Without any shadow of doubt, every little issue that you've brought up this afternoon will be debated by the audit committee and probably a heck of a lot more as well. So you making the proposal, it goes to the audit committee, can I have a second for that, please? Fine, all in agreement, please show. Thank you, you'll go to the audit committee for determination, oh, sorry, for a recommendation back to this councillor, thank you very much. Councillor Edwards, you'll be pleased to know that councillor, agenda item ten is now within your remit. Oh, sorry, councillor Clark, I've come back here. Councillor Fox, on the audit committee, sorry, the standards committee report, there is a recommendation in there. Can we take councillor Edwards's, he's going to move that council accept this and then we can deal with the situation after. Councillor Edwards.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can I bring to the attention of this particular report? Due to the independent chairman having served her terms as the independent chairman, cannot continue any longer. And further to that, one of the other independent members also has resigned. So there is a need for us to re-elect at some time two new independent members to the council. And what I was going to say is that possibly, Mr. Trant, the monitoring officer, would like to clear up first of all, a slight debate we had this morning on two one, which was to appoint three elected members to the panel for the interviews. We seem to think that the three independent, the three elected members who are already on that committee did it last time and we saw, I think, no reason why they shouldn't serve further. Those members being county councillor David Evans. I've got one of those senior moments where Paul Jordan and myself are those three elected members. The rest of the recommendations, two two, two three, two four, I'm just wondering if Mr. Trant would like to illuminate that a little further.
I know that the leader wants to say something, honestly, in relation to these nominations, do you want to say, what do you want to say now or with the leader?
Certainly, Chairman, thank you very much. It's obviously a matter for this council to decide who those three elected members are. I can't remember what happened in 2013, whether it was the incumbent members of the standards committee. If it was, then that would seem sensible, but it's a matter for the council as a whole, not me. There is an error, typical of, typical, just to find this out now, in the report, in that the date in paragraph one is clearly wrong. Because it's the thirteenth of January twenty seventeen that the two independent members' terms finish, rather than twenty sixteen. But, so a matter for who the elected representatives are to be on the panel. I've already had a community councillor from One Voice Wales and the lay member, that normally is the high sheriff, and the high sheriff has agreed to sit on the panel on this occasion. Also, furthermore, an advert will go out in South Wales Argus next week. And I think the deadline date is the eighteenth of November. So hopefully, with a fair wind, we'll have some names to bring back to the council. Because it's a council decision to appoint these independent members, that will be in January's meeting of council. If there are any questions, I can assist with it, Chairman, then of course I'll help.
Yes, certainly I can remember and it's probably, it's probably three years ago, I was on an interview panel for a member of the standards committee. But I think we don't need to go into all this, we just need the nominations as all. Councillor Fox, you want to do?
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Chairman, and thank you councillor Edwards for taking this through. I thought I was having to present it, but you did an excellent job in that. But, so if we've got clarity then that it could be a current sitting member who is actually a standards member can be part of this appointment panel. I will nominate councillor Paul Jordan from the Conservative group.
Councillor Petroni?
From the Labour group, I nominate councillor Jim Higginson.
Thank you, councillor Howard.
I'll nominate Francis Taylor.
Thank you councillor Howard. Is there any other nominations on that, please? All in favour, please show.
Point of clarity, Mr. Trant has said the South Wales Argus, could you include the two beacons, Monmouth and Chepstow?
Well, that's up to...
I can assist with that, I think, Chairman. I think as part of the South Wales Argus, they are, a newspaper will be circulated in those areas also. I did check on that and I think the beacon may be a sister paper of the Argus. But hopefully, everybody who needs to see the advert will see the advert. Thank you, Chairman.
I think most are related one way or another. Item eleven, report with chief executive, future schools programme. Councillor Hackett P.
Thank you very much, Chairman, and may I start first of all by welcoming the head teacher from Caldicott Comprehensive School, Susan Guire Roberts, and the deputy head of Monmouth Comp, Tim Bird. Thank you very much for coming and for your support here today. As you know, schools and education have been an absolute priority for this administration. But also as a whole council, it has been a whole council priority, not just the schools but the schools' building programme, and that has gone on for many years. This actual project of the two secondary schools has been a good four years in the making. And from this, we will have sixty years of investment ahead of us. I think for the children, there is a great example of unity across the council. And I would also like to thank councillor Roger Harris, who has represented the substantial opposition throughout this building programme. The report that is in front of us looks to secure funding, a commitment to the reality of our plans. It is a massive investment, it is probably the biggest investment in the county. And of that investment, at least eighty-five percent of the funding will be spent within forty miles radius of the schools. So there is tens of money, lots of money, coming back into our communities, millions. There is a commitment to replace the pool and even though there are rumours that that isn't going to be the case, that is not true at all. There has always been a commitment to a swimming pool in Monmouth and that continues without a doubt. This report also introduces a separation between the school build and the leisure upgrade. This will ensure continuity. The project board, the program board, stands behind the recommendation that is before us today. And I will ask the chief executive, Mr. Paul Matthews, if he would take us through the technical aspects of this report before we get to any questions.
Yeah, before the chief executive does that, just for members to be aware, I had a letter from pupils of Caldicott School this afternoon, about ten minutes before the meeting started. It's addressed to myself, dear councillor Higginson, on behalf of the pupils of Caldicott School and the community of Monmouth County, we would like to thank the Monmouth County Council for its brave decision to build this new school. We knew that this must be a huge undertaking and we are very grateful to our councillors. Our school buildings at present are really looking shabby and the rooms are very cramped. We have seen the plans and we can say that it would be great to have space and like to learn new things in the exciting rooms. It is seen as an opportunity for us to share the ownership of our own education. And they have contributed towards particularly Caldicott School, I'm aware of. Your commitment to this vision for education for Monmouth County will benefit not just over thirteen hundred pupils now but future generations of learners and will be testament to your vision and passion as dedicated education servants. On behalf of all the pupils, please tell the committee a big thank you from the pupils of Caldicott School. I'd just like to say this, a week or so ago, we had a dinner in Monmouth and all the heads, head boys and head girls of the four comprehensives were invited and they are very enthusiastic towards the, particularly the Caldicott and the Monmouth schools at this moment in time and later, the Abbe Gavernie and Chepstow schools. But they are very enthusiastic to see these projects come along. So chief executive, you want to say something?
Thank you, Chair. Councillors, you would have read the report yourself, so you can rest assured, I'm not going to read it to you. The reason it's in my name is because Sarah, as you probably know, is not well at the moment, so that's the reason that I'm talking to it rather than Sarah. So let's get to the nub of the matter. The program board, I think as councillor Hackett Payne has been steadfastly working on this program now for an excess of four years actually. And we sit here today with a report which looks to elevate a program cost of seventy-six million pounds in round numbers to a program cost of eighty-eight million pounds. Eleven point nine, if you want to be accurate, twelve is the number that I'm using for explanation. And the report sets out, in headline terms, the reason for that cost increase or projected cost increase because clearly we haven't committed to enact these two developments at this point in time. It draws out the well above average rate of inflation that the construction market is experiencing and I have to say, based on insight, will continue to experience. So I guess if we decide to not proceed today, then at some point in the future when we, if we return to this program in absolute terms, I would suggest you that inflation would have continued to work against us. I think we received some less than optimal advice in the early days of this program from our preferred contractor. That resulted in that program team being stepped down and a complete replacement being put in place by the contractor. And the program board, I think, have worked quite conscientiously to assure themselves and through them you that the program that is put before you now passes value for money benchmarks as determined at a national level. You will see quite clearly that Wales government have agreed to make five point nine five million pounds additional contribution towards the overall cost uplift, or funding uplift that we're looking for. And I can offer you an assurance that that hasn't necessarily been a straightforward conversation. As you would expect, as I would expect, Wales government have wanted to satisfy themselves that our ask is based on really, really hard, industry proven fact and evidence. I think Simon will be in a position in a few moments to exemplify that for you if you want that exemplification. If we agree to this funding uplift today, the ability for council to honor its pledge to open Caldicott School, a new Caldicott School for September two seventeen, will be intact. We can achieve that. Council's commitment to open a new Monmouth School for September eighteen will be intact. We'll be able to honor that, which I think is hopefully good news all round. Significantly, I guess, the change in program in terms of what you as members would see on the ground when complete is much more around the campus of Monmouth than it is around Caldicott. And again, just so that you are absolutely clear in terms of the decision that you are being asked to take, I want to be clear with you in terms of what that change has been. The Monmouth campus, the Monmouth school site, has always been a little bit more of a challenge for us than Caldicott. Because effectively, for those of you that know... Because effectively, for those of you that know the area well, I think in this chamber several times over the years, we've talked about water and Monmouth in the same sentence. We are effectively building a new school on an island. There is a very, very small part of that site which is capable of hosting and holding a school. And I think I'm right in Simon in saying, and just nod if I am so that members can see me, that we have to go down about eleven to twelve metres on that site to find base rock in which we can place a building. I'm no construction expert, but I know that's a long way. It's longer than we typically have to go when we're working on sites. So in this report, when you see the term abnormal, what we are talking about is effectively construction cost that you will never, ever see. It's construction cost below the ground on the whole, which gives us a permanence to our building facilities. Why is Caldecott abnormal so high? It's because we're effectively building on a beach. Again, for those of you that are closer to the history of our area than perhaps I, it wasn't too many hundred years ago that Caldecott was in fact a different consistency than it is now. So to stabilize that environment, to host a facility for sixteen hundred children requires a certain form of construction. That clearly is not problematic and again, Simon will demonstrate to you a little later the, I think, the pretty impressive progress that's already been made on the Caldecott site. So to Monmouth, we are building a school with a pool, not a pool with a school. But both aspects of that development are critical and important to not only children but to the wider town. This council made a commitment that they wanted to see a holistic development. Program board have stayed consistent to that commitment, but been willing to think about whether there is a better alternative than perhaps the one that was put to council last time we were all together. At that point in time, you may or may not recall that we were proposing to build a swimming pool as part of the main school build within the school. The proposal now is not to do that. The proposal is to construct a sports hall as part of the main school build and put a new swimming pool as part of our current leisure facility. Okay, so the commitment to re-provide a pool plus potentially an enhanced leisure facility for the community of Monmouth remains true. The sequencing and the layout of the site changes. I think it's fair to say that, in fact, I know it's fair to say that certainly from a governing body perspective of the two schools, those changes have been explained, they're understood. And I would go as far as to say, now Tim, you can go like that if you don't agree with this. I believe I'm right in saying they are welcomed by Monmouth School because ultimately it will provide a better, safer facility, which is better managed and will be more accessible not only to children during the course of a school day, but also to adults during the course of a school day. And will design out some of the flow problems that we've had, I think, on the site for any number of years. So I think the governing body are quite content with that. The sequencing of the build changes a little bit because I'm not sure that we would want to dig up the sports hall in Monmouth Leisure Centre until we had a new sports hall already provided as part of the new build. So there are some sequencing issues. And I'm not going to go a heck of a lot further than that. I'm going to go back to the absolute core of this report so that you're very, very clear. This report is looking for a funding uplift of circa eleven point nine million pounds. The consequence to our organization of that funding uplift is five point nine five million pounds. That five point nine five million pounds would need to be serviced or could be serviced in any number of ways. And this report looks to provide delegated authority to the cabinet member in consultation with the chief officer of resources, Peter Davis, and your section one five one officer, Joy Robson, to find the optimal funding mix to make that work best for the council. So I hope that clarifies, whether you agree or whether you don't agree, I hope it clarifies the decision that's being put to you today. And if you decide to go with the recommendation of the program board, then you will have your two new build secondary schools for the endpoint that we have previously talked about. Members, I thought it may be useful through you chair if Simon were to offer you a sense of what in fact you will be buying, what you will be getting. It's for members to determine whether that would be useful or not. But I would suggest that you might want to have a quick look at that before we move the debate into the chamber.
Could I just say, to go back to that letter from Caldecott School, it's from Alex, the head boy, Misha, the head girl, Jack and Rhiannon, the year ten pupils. One question, the Future Schools Program Board, could councillor Hacket Payne confirm all the members on that board? Please, for the benefit of someone may not know.
Yes, of course chairman. The members on that board are relevant officers within the council, finance, building, schools, across the directorate. There are also myself, Peter Fox, councillor Fox, councillor Greenland, councillor Murphy, councillor Roger Harris and two officers from the Twenty First Century Schools team as well, and Simon Nivsky.
Thank you, before I go to Mr Simon Nivsky, councillor Guppy, you want to say something?
Yes, sorry.
I will go to Mr Nivsky after.
I'm a LEA governor at Caldecott School, I need to declare a personal interest. I have got a family at the school, but I don't perceive that it would be prejudicial.
Personal only. Mr Nivsky.
Sorry, chairman, if I... Sorry, so just to confirm, feedback. Councillor Guppy is the only governor then of Monmouth and Caldecott Comprehensive Schools?
Oh, Caldecott only.
What about Monmouth? Right, okay then, so councillor Blackbury, you need to declare a personal interest as well. It'll only be personal, it's not prejudicial because of paragraph twelve. If you've got children, close personal associates in the school, then you also need to consider that and then consider whether that personal interest, because that is a personal interest, is also prejudicial. But so if we could make sure that we declare our interests, I've counted two on this matter and we can then move forward. Thank you.
Mr Nivsky, would you like to go through the...
Thank you very much. I've just got a couple of slides here.
Sorry, Mr Nivsky, just a second. It's on the screen over here, everyone can see it? Oh, sorry councillor Edwards, I didn't see you. Okay, the same advice applies to you.
Thank you.
Mr Nivsky.
Okay, thank you. This is just a quick run through to bring everybody up to speed on where we are with the program at this moment in time. Technology works, great. Really just to, this first slide looks at what we're trying to do, what the Twenty First Century program is trying to do. It is a partnership between ourselves and the Welsh government and it's not just a building program. It's actually looking at the change in education, how we can meet some of the changing needs through the building program. Look at efficiencies within the designs themselves and estates. And a look at ways in which we can create a flexible, agile teaching and learning environment, not just for the pupils to stay in the future, but also for a community, it is a community asset. You set out very early on that this wasn't just a build, new build for old. So it wasn't just repeating what you've got already. It was actually to look at ways in which you can transform teaching and learning and make these environments very much the community asset that you wish. It isn't just about, again, about buildings, it's also about looking at the digital environment. And you talk a lot about that being a very important part of the authorities' vision going through the future. These schools are part of that process and are actually quite a key element of pushing that digital literacy forward, not only again for students but also within communities that it serves. The way we've gone about the design is we haven't just gone away and just picked up a schedule of accommodation or picked up another school and said, we'll have one of those please. We actually started with the schools from day one and looked at the curriculum, looked at the timetabling, looked at where they believe the future of education is going. Moreover, looking at some of the new thinking around Welsh curriculum and built that with them. So built a schedule of accommodation which fitted the efficiency and effectiveness within the school design itself. For example, most schools are about forty to fifty percent efficient in total use during the day. By good design and by actually understanding how the curriculum has been delivered, we've got space utilization up to about seventy odd percent with each of the schools. That's a good use of space, that from a higher further education view is a good way of using your assets to its maximum. We have talked to everybody, we've talked to pupils, parents, teachers, we've visited schools, we've looked, we've examined what's important to everybody and that is included in the development of the design. There's a lot of talk about modularization, standardization of schools. I think there are some values in that and what we've tried to do is take those principles forward. We've looked at very simple buildings, using simple building technologies, technologies that you would see in office developments. So we have flexible, there aren't any gold plated taps in there or diamonds hanging from the ceiling. It's using effective technology, standardizing key components. So even though the two schools may have different views on my education's been delivered, the plans for both the schools are very, very similar. We deliberately didn't show them the plans so that we allowed them to develop what they felt was important to them. The outcome is actually a very simple school with similar design. That's brilliant for the next two schools because it shows there's a footprint, a Monmouthshire solution to its educational vision. We've also again looked at key components, part of it is about how you look after your estate going into the future. It's not a six year investment which you sit back and look at for sixty years and you've got to look after it. We've looked at the best way of maintaining the buildings, look at key components, the standardization of those such as windows, doors, bricks. So again, once the capital investment is there, there is a strategy in how the buildings will be maintained into the future. For those who are interested in building costs, very much we've looked at the floor to wall ratios, the more floor you got to the wall, the more efficient the building is, we're very high on that. And again, the energy efficiency within the buildings are very, very key here. We've modeled the costs going forward on the schools and the utilities bills coming down by about twenty percent. We've worked with the schools councils and the eco councils to show how they can use the school as well. So again, using the whole program to help teach and learn going forward. And I think that's been very important in how we've moved things forward on there. There is a, some of the key issues that you get with new schools and if you go around Wales now and look at some of the schools, still some of the key complaints are the, it gets hot in the summer, you open the window and you just let hot air in. So again, one of the things that affects concentration is the temperature in the buildings. By using a breathable building strategy and using the buildings as thermal mass, we were able to heat and cool the building effectively. But also use very, very simple background ventilation to move the air through. So you've got a fantastic environment to study and learn in. This is just some quick pictures of what you have at the moment. They're not bad, but you know, they are environments which, actually this one actually doesn't have any windows. But you know, it's, they are environments which need to improve to support. Learning resource centers, sorry, I picked on Monmouth a lot there, but it gives you an idea what we're replacing. What we promised is to develop modern classrooms to allow teaching and learning to go on in different types. Try and challenge some of the ways that teaching and learning goes on, so from science, we're not building nine fully fitted science labs. We've looked at super labs, we've looked at labs which are dry labs, look at the way which the curriculum is developing forward. And we've looked at creating the right spaces. And in both schools, we've put the art department on the top floor with north lights and some damn good views. So again, looking at the right places for faculties to exist. But also that one of the important things as part of the Welsh education strategy is independent learning and problem solving. So it's not just about creating lots and lots of classrooms where didactic teaching happens. Lots of spaces within the school where individuals can work, groups can work and meet. But also resources that are open and available and a lot of schools and a lot of buildings, libraries, they're hidden behind doors. When you want to get information, these schools allow you to get it as and when you need it. Certainly within the faculties and hub spaces of the school. I have a slide which I didn't bring to me, which I had and it was a school I went to and they had an area which they thought they'd been very clever about, it's called their innovation center. And there was a sign up there saying, sorry, closed, out for lunch. So the concept that you can only be innovative when they tell you to be, these schools allow you to do that, both in curriculum space but also non-curriculum timetabled. We're using again, simple technologies to make the spaces immersive. So there's no, what's the point of learning about World War One or something within history from a book? Why not see a film, look at a map, engage with some of the technologies there? Certainly the technology we're putting in the schools, if you're learning French, we're not dialing into a school in France and talk to one of your peers in their language and have that conversation. Again, I think it's important those technologies are understood. Don't know about your dining experience in our school, but it was pretty rough where I was. But we've looked at the social elements of school and again, that's important in enriching people's experience at school. And that includes quiet areas as well. One of the special things I think in one of us was we've looked at the way in which whole years can be brought together and key lessons can be brought together. So the use of circulation stairs, making them slightly wider, being able to put a year group there and giving a call lecture. One of the things you hear from talking to teachers a lot is that in maths you may have three classes next to each other all teaching the same thing. Why not all bring them together, teach them one element in core, then break down into smaller groups to look at the right independent learning for each of those students. It's frozen like me now. Ah, there we are. And a sense of wow, I think one of the things that we've tried to do in the schools is give that sense of presence, a sense of a civic building. This is the largest investment I suspect an authority will make. These are the largest buildings, Caldecott is thirteen thousand square meters, Monmouth is fourteen, just over fourteen thousand square meters. They're huge civic centers, they're massive buildings, so we've got to give them a sense of presence and longevity. And areas like that can be used to bring the whole community in, it's not just about serving students and staff within there. As was mentioned, the program also looks at how we can spend the money in the right places. That has been a positive as well as a negative for us. But at the moment, currently eighty-five percent of the funding is being invested in forty miles of each of the sites. Seventy percent of the workforce is from Wales and of that seventy-one, fifty percent of them are local. I haven't got the exact mileage away from the site for the local, but I certainly can find that if people wish to see. The contractor has made a commitment to training and to future development. We've said to the schools and to people around there, there are twenty-two different professions on that site, there are lots of trades as well. And part of the collaboration with By Apprentice is that they have actually got a program where they're trying to do it, where they are delivering one thousand seven hundred and sixty person weeks of training and support through this program as well. And here's some of the statistics. So far, we've got, they've gone to six contractor events, which is important, getting out there telling them what we're doing. Seven apprentices on site to date, nine young unemployed persons have been involved. And nineteen of those who graduated through apprentices now have full-time jobs on the sites. So what does that look like? I've got a fly through of both Monmouth and Caldecott here, Caldecott first, it takes about seven minutes. Hopefully that'll be okay with everybody? Okay, so hopefully you can see the video playing now. This is the approach on the corner of Woodstock Road coming in to the main entrance to the school itself. Again, very important to us was the choice of materials, we stuck with brick, that's important. Gives us a robust material that will take a hell of a lot of punishment and will get you the sixty, seventy year life span that you're looking for. We've come in the main entrance here, that staircase we showed where a lot of people gathered, there's a main entrance there, you can present from that. can present from that and a whole school could come together around some of the balconies at the top as well. As we go up the stairs, you come in and you're looking down into the atrium area, that's the learning resource area. So resources are open and accessible to all through there. So we turn through. We're now coming in Coldacott's, the performing arts is very important, medium performing arts are important, and they wanted to elevate their hall to the first floor to give it a sense of presence. So this is the hall on the first floor, great views out into the metropole of Coldacott. I'm not sure about the people on their phones in there when the lectures... Again, you're going through these doors now and going out and linking all the spaces together around into the music and drama department. So we've tried to group facilities together which may be used, which work together in a curriculum base but also could work together in the future outside school use for bands or for orchestras that may wish to use the facilities of the school itself. We're now coming into science and one of the interesting things, important things, we looked at different ways of delivering science. In the centre of the science department, there is a super lab. And the idea here is that key experiments can be delivered to not only just a couple of classes, but there's a balcony at the top area where you could have lectures and bring more people in to look at science. Science is at the heart. What we've tried to do also is not use long corridors with doors off it. We've used that space, the circulation space, turned it around and made it useful to use. So whether that's through a hub or through an activity, you'll find in both schools there's very, very small corridors, very small corridors in width, but length of corridors where there's no activity on them. It's very much about activity and using space positively. So we've just come through a staircase into the building and this comes into the top part of science. You can see all the pipes and wires going in. These models that the contractors working with us are going to be incredibly useful in the future for maintenance. So all the pipes that are going in, they're coordinating them at the moment. So you're able to hand this model over, as someone who's going to maintain your building in the future clicks on a window, it will tell you where the window comes from, who the manufacturer is, warranties, where you can get them from and any parts and components. So it isn't just a nice flashy instrument, this is actually a model that will be used to maintain your building in the future. We're coming through now, I think, into, let me go, bearings. Not over the top of the balcony there, but through into, I think it's English, English into this. I know it's maths, mathematics department. I think those who have actually visited the site, if my maths department looked like theirs, I'd be pretty impressed. Again, the idea here is that you've got classrooms that feed off a central space, so there can be some independent working that goes on, support at point of need. Certainly when I went to school, if a student needed support, they were withdrawn from the maths department and giving that support somewhere else. Why not give it in the environment where their peers are and in environments where they can have a one-to-one, a group working or a core element of the lecture? Now we're into English. And again, all the way through the building, we've made sure natural light is an important factor. Again, that links into a central courtyard that's outside. What feeds into that is the dining but also the catering. So some of the life skills or some of the skills in catering can be used. There's a semi-commercial kitchen in there where peers can serve to other peers within a safe environment. That also gives an additional flexibility in some of the dining space for school. That's always the biggest challenge about schools is actually having enough, adequate dining areas. By using the outside areas and over-covered areas, we've been able to expand and contract that accordingly. You can see with the model, we've used in this really to also work with teachers to show them, as a floating radiator, to teach them about what their spaces look like now so they can start to prepare what that looks like in more detail. It's very good to show people a 2D drawings or things in real life, but actually the model starts to look at them, look at it. So we've got a system now with QR codes where a teacher of maths can click on it, they can actually then look at their own classroom or a set of classrooms and get a feel for the environments that they're going to be working and teaching in. This is the atrium space, internal one. Again, that's looking down into the resource, central resource area. Again, there's very much collegiate feel to these, very mature, very workplace environment and it's no, there's no recurrence that we've actually used office technology in the construction because the flexibility that office plates give you, also the ability to create more modern environments is important. This is a typical classroom. As you can see, there's a glazed panel to one side, so that passive supervision is there at all times, looking out in those spaces. So again, for a teaching perspective, you could teach a core lesson, then groups can break out, there's passive supervision through that and through those glazing to have groups within the classroom but also those working outside as well. We're coming down the stairs now into the dining area. Again, another view of Coldacott Metropole. Pretty impressive that really. Again, you can see what's good about this is you can see there's a few lights floating. That's the M and E coordinators now putting their information in. We can see where clashes are, they can adjust the drawings to suit that. So the idea is that when they come on site, there are no clashes, all the problems on site are solved through the model in advance. This is down into the dining area. Again, different types of dining experience. This isn't a dining area that's going to be closed for most of the day, it's going to be there as a facility that can be used flexibly throughout the day and also the way it's positioned potentially be used outside normal school hours. As we pan out now, you can see it's a big building. It's impressive, it's going to have a sense of presence within those. And those who are coming across the bridge in the morning, like I do, you can actually just see this big purple building rising up at the moment. So as you enter into Wales, as if you were in Monmouth as well, these are the first buildings that you're going to see. So that's a shot, we've got a camera on site that takes photographs every day, so hopefully at the end of it you'll see your building being built in the next three minutes. So again, it's an important tool for the students to work with and work is progressing at speed at the moment. The challenge to help with costs was to squeeze the programme, that looked at different types of building methodologies. And at the moment, they are about a week ahead of programme on a challenging programme, so that's pretty impressive. Monmouth, I have a model for Monmouth, if people wish me to fly through it? Yeah? Okay. And you'll see that the schools, the environments we talked about in one school are identical to another school. So we've actually tried to get a Monmaire solution for our schools and these again are transferable. And I have talked to both Claire and Elspeth about these, so they understand the environments that we're creating and are very positive about those as well. This is the main entrance to schools, you come in, the staircase, each of those staircases where you can bring whole groups together onto main circulation. This model is a little bit behind the Coldacott one, we're just feeding it through. So we're even looking at how lockers are integrated into the building so they don't stick out or they don't become problems for litter and abuse really. Walking through, we're coming through now into the humanities department. Each department, as you come into it, has the faculty offices there and it's a small group working area, so you know you're coming into an area which is dedicated to that subject area. We talked about Mercer Space, this is actually the one in geography. There's double height space in there which they'll use flex speed to project onto the walls. Above you at that point there is the bat cave and those who want to know more about the bat cave, I'm quite happy to go about it. But because there's a endangered species of bats that floats around in Monmouth, we have to provide them a bat cave. The actual, the actual bat is only about that big, but it's got a room of half a classroom size, you have to do, which is heated. So these are some things sometimes when you're designing a building or a school, you don't take into consideration, but that's quite an important part of getting through planning is to protect the ecology of the area as you go through. So again, walking down one of the corridors, looking back into the main entrance hall there. I think we're, at this point, we're on, oh, I've forgotten this one, this is Languages, I think, it's Languages, yeah. Again, you've got the same type of spaces that break out from the classrooms there, again, using circulation in a way that's more creative. And what was important, both of the schools themselves are in existing schools which are lots of buildings, which is spread around. That's positive and negative. Positive from the side of the students because there's an identity, "I'm going to the phoenix, I'm going to this building." And when you, and one of the biggest challenges for us is, well, if you put it all into one building, how do we know where we are? What's the sense of place? And the whole design's based around having long views, not only so that teachers can manage the environments but also that students know where they are, the way the faculty's designed so they know they're entering into a faculty so they have a sense of place. And again, that was a very important thing that the students put forward. So again, when you look at the dispersed nature of the buildings, there is an importance that we can't ignore. I'm not having green by the way, I don't like that green. But again, looking now into one of the toilet blocks, we did talk to them about having toilet provisions which were, were architecturally, anybody could use them. Very much the students didn't want that, they wanted male or female toilets. But the way we've designed it is that you can have that, but in the future if they wanted to be just a bank of toilets, they can use that. They're full-height cubicles, so there's no issues of people being able to look in or over these areas, so they can be dealt with as individual areas. This is a view from the second floor, looking down below there would be the dining area of the school. The school is designed and the acoustics are such that sound is dealt with within the space it is. So though there are elements of open planning here, oh, this is one of my favourite spaces, this is at the top here now, this is the art department with the top light. They've got some great views out of the building but also the light coming into the centre and that was their exhibition space and sixth working area. We're now into science, very fast. Again, they have their areas, instead of having a super lab in the centre, they've virtually had demonstration areas around there. So again, they can demonstrate key experiments to groups of students as and when needed and then allow them to break into their classrooms. Whizzing down the staircase, you'll see to the left here, that's the pupil entrance from the bus bay. Those who know the school, there's a large, sixty percent, the students come by bus, so it's important, that entrance is as important as the main one. Into the hall, we've linked the activity studio and the hall together, the area and also into the sports centre. So again, trying to collect together a lot of the larger spaces, including change rooms, that could for a simple closing of doors be accessible to the public to use as well. Panning out again, you can get a feel for the building, they are again, large buildings. So finally, you say, we are in a position now where we have fixed construction costs on both schools, but we will seek further opportunities to reduce costs where we can. There's no doubt that they're in Wales, because this is a large investment programme in Wales and one of the key considerations is that money needs to be spent in Wales. The subcontractors know that and they've been very much, you know, they have, they feel they have a closed market. So we have challenged some of the costs. We have now brickies from Cardiff where we had them from Manchester before and the local steel is being produced from usk, morgues of usk are doing this and hopefully through negotiation, they may do Monmouth as well. So but again, it's about getting the best value for money through the process. Programs has been touched, Coldacott, main works complete in September. There are then the knocking down of existing buildings and making good the playing areas. And if we have favorable submission for additional funding, Monmouth Comprehensive is looking to be finished, I wish it was July two thousand and sixteen, it's two thousand and eighteen. Again, with the follow-on work from there. Site infrastructure, an organisation has been developed to respond to the leisure offer. There is a new power going into the leisure centre and a new fibre optic, so we've understood that if there's a change in the project for the campus, we put the infrastructure as part of this project. In fact, actually at Monmouth, I think we put all the infrastructure for everybody. A lot of the drainage goes through, from the rest of the town goes through the site. We've had to replace quite a considerable amount of that that's been damaged. We have approval for the fifty percent of the funding for the programme, so that's an update of where we are at this moment.
Right, thank you for that excellent presentation, Miss Nisi. What, a little bit I want to say, I go past the Caligot School four, five times every day, so I know how the progress is going on there. But we had a walkabout on the site a week or so ago and it was emphasised to us that Caligot, the pupils, particularly in Caligot School and the same will apply in Monmouth, I'm sure, they've made contributions to this particular building project. And you know, it's good that the pupils have got any input into that. Right, I've got councillor Petroni and councillor Kevin Williams. Oh, sorry, Bob Hayward first, sorry councillor Bob Hayward, I did write him down, yeah. Oh, sorry, Bob Hayward first, sorry, councillor Bob Hayward, I did write him down, yeah.
First of all, can I say that the chief executive was right, we are here, I think this is a natural event, we are here to promote the, the extra funding that is required. And I absolutely support that recommendation. We are proud of our school government, we are proud of our teachers, we are proud of the results that our schools produce. And I'm sure this council could have no option but to create the extra funding required at the first place at school.
Good councillor Hackett Payne answer that please, and then I go to councillor Petroni and councillor Ruth Edwards in that order after.
Thank you very much, chairman, and if there are elements that I don't pick up, I'm sure Simon will pick those up, especially about the, the fixed costs. Just picking up on councillor Hayward's point about the three options, yes, he, he's quite right, there were three options, and we went through a process to choose the best option for the sighting of Monmouth Comprehensive School. But can I also say to councillor Hayward, the very reasons that we're here today, the cost of building materials, the cost of labour would apply whichever site we had chosen, whether it was on the site and the playing fields, we would still be here with that, with this option in front of us. Because it isn't the site, it is the, the costs in effect that have gone up. The disruption to the school, that was known, that has been planned and planned well with the school. There always will be some disruption when you're building, and we, we know that. The pool, I will leave to, to, to Bob to, to come in on that one. The, as far as I'm aware, the costs are now fixed, and in effect, if there is any overspend from now on, the contractors pick that up. The, yes, there was unknown parameters below ground, yes. But some of that, the, the building things have changed since the old school was put up. The constraints are greater than they were, and I'll ask Simon's professional advice on that, that one. As far as paying for it, it will not come out of staff. This was one of the things that at the project board, we were quite sure, it will not come out of staff. The costs will come out of the maintenance costs for the schools.
Quiet please, quiet please, no cross, quiet please, if you want to speak, you'll have your opportunity, you haven't signified that yet.
Thank you, chairman. With a new school, the costs of maintenance are minimal to begin with, you have a brand new school there. So that is where the costs, they will not be staff costs. But I'd ask, like, ask Simon to pick up, or the chief executive on the point side.
If I just pick up on the two, the major ground costs. We're in a position where we have a fixed cost for Coldicott and one for Monmouth, subject to the additional funding. Contracts are ready, contracts ready to sign on, on Coldicott, there was just going through legal on that side, till we know what, where we're going with Monmouth. But we have that, that reassurance now. As part of the contract, once those are signed, there is a risk register, we know exactly where our risks are, and they know exactly where their risks are. With regards to changes, I've reserved the right to look for more savings. And I think that as a, as a client, we need to make sure that if there are opportunities going forward, that we take full, full advantage of them. So again, we may look at types of floor coverings for want of a better description, look at the, where the better value, depending on the market, what comes in, what comes out. And the contractor will work with us on that, but we have a, want of a better description, a guaranteed maximum price, which is a lump sum for each of those schools now. So we'd have to manage that. Risk wise, the, the risks that we hold are dark ground. What that means is anything under the existing buildings that we haven't knocked down, and asbestos. You mentioned the, the existing school built on, on ground. Actually, if you look at the Natural Resource Wales Plan now, that school is under two, about two foot water, you wouldn't be able to build it at that level now. The, the, the construction, those who, who, who are interested, I'd love to take and show you the site. In fact, two of the buildings we've got to take down hand by hand, because the, the amount of asbestos in certain areas within that building. And actually, at the moment, we're cutting of a ground floor slab that's got to be sealed and taken away. So there's a lot of things that may well have not been done properly in the sixties, seventies when those buildings were built. We're picking the bill up for those as well. Regards to building out on the playing field, again, it would have been easy, everybody's life would have been easy to build it on a playing field, and not disrupt school, I can assure you, if there was a chance of doing that, we would have done that. The idea of putting the building on stilts from an architectural perspective is fantastic. However, we couldn't fill that in, because it's about flood itself. So if we filled in underneath there and made it safe, we'd have to, we'd only be pushing the water down to someone else's problem. The building would have been over three metres in the air, and from a planning perspective, that would have made the building four stories. Three stories is probably about the most you can get on, on that site. Aspects and the neighbours along the Dixon Road would, would be of that ilk. Regards to neighbours and how we're getting on with them, I think I may ask the school if they want to comment on it. But actually, we, we've got a good dialogue with them, the contractors got incredible dialogue with the Burgage. The Burgage are very well-informed individuals who have worked with us from day one, and challenged us in fairness. And I think recently, the, they, they wrote to the school to praise the contractor and the way it's, they're working with them. I think it's not from our site they've got problems, I think it's from an adjacent site where contractors probably aren't as considerate as they are going forward on that.
Yes, we need to clear this issue, or the issues of councillor, councillor Greenland, you'll need to clarify a few things then, and the order then will be councillor Petroni and councillor Ruth Edwards after.
Yeah, thanks, chairman. The school requires a continuity of use for the sports hall. The sports hall is to go as part of the new build, but the current sports hall is within the leisure centre. And that is exactly the spot where the pool is to go. So you cannot build the spool, the pool, until the new sports hall in the school is, is built. Therefore, there is no other option, other than a, a closed period, as we'd originally said. So councillor Hayward is not right in saying there could have been continuity of use of the, of the pool.
Thank you, councillor Petroni.
Chairman, thank you. Councillor Hayward mentioned the point I was going to raise, and I'd like to go a bit further than he did. Two point one, point three, bullet point two, where we take the money, borrow it, and make the schools pay for the cost of this. Can I just make clear that the Labour Group absolutely supports this, the general recommendation, the extra money to make the necessary requirement, changes? And I'm not an engineer or construction, so I accept every point Simon, Simon Niesfi has said. But I'm not prepared to accept to give delegated power to the, to the respective parties involved to make our, make children in Caligot and Monmouth for future generations pay for the school. Bullet point one and three, fine, if we have to borrow the money, or if we have to sell assets to fund this, I have essentially no problem with that. I do have a massive problem with making future generations in Monmouth and Caligot pay for this. It's not right, and we should get rid of bullet point two, it should not be considered as an option, and we should not vote for such an option.
I'd say councillor Ruth Edwards and councillor Debbie Blackbra after.
Thank you very much, chair. Thank you very much for the video of that, it was very, very interesting. I do like design and planning, it's my main interest, not figures. I feel as though maybe I was born very much too soon, when you think of the opportunities that our children will have today, it's very futuristic, and I wish them all well in that. There's just one thing, that we saw a lot of stairs on there in the design. I'm just wondering how many lifts you've got in each school for those who cannot manage the stairs, thank you.
Yeah, could you answer that please?
We have one lift in each of the schools, but it's, it's designed, overdesigned to allow for disabled access through that school. So the, the whole building is DDA compliant.
Councillor Blackbra, I've got councillor Kevin Williams first, and then you can follow.
Thank you, chair. All I can say is, you know, regarding the building, I mean councillor Hayward's got a lot more local knowledge than I have, as you have shared in the Caldicott area. The building's tremendously futuristic, they're, they're everything you'd want a school to be. They're clean, they're tidy, good lines of sight for everything. I think they encompass most of the facilities that you really want in a, in a school. I'm really pleased with them, better look at. One of the questions I've got is bullet point one, which says about the opportunity to release further assets. Is there anything left that we've got that we can sell now then? Because I thought we were coming to the end of this. It's a bit of a, bit of a concern to me about what we can actually sell off, and what's left. Did, county hall, I. Dimitri, didn't you make an amendment to say that bullet proof two should be removed from there? I mean, if we have to take it on the chin, perhaps in, as a council, that's fair enough. But again, making the, the schools pay for the next twenty-five years, I think, could be a burden that might be a step too far for them. Depending on what you're asking them to do over twenty-five years, it's a long period of time. But I'd like a bit more clarity on, on what we're going to sell, any ideas?
Before councillor Blackbra comes in, the company issues around, you know, who's going to pay for what. I think if we clear that up first, and then at least it might resolve a few of the issues, you know, or thoughts. Councillor Murphy.
Yes, thank you, chair. The, the assets we can sell, we still have surplus buildings. We have buildings that are becoming surplus within the, the current plans for rationalisation. There are county farms that are currently under offer, and more that will be coming forward, from what we understand. So there's plenty of opportunities to sell off surplus, surplus assets yet. As regards the funding, the three of us, when we sit down and, and look at this, will look at internal borrowing, we'll look at every other aspect open to us, to enable us to, to service this borrowing from other sources wherever we can. The point about the, the schools is that any, any savings within school budgets, as a result of them occupying these premises, should be utilised to enable us to, to affect the potential borrowing. And that potential borrowing will be the smallest amount that we have to borrow. So we're not talking, as councillor Hacket Payne said, we're not talking about staff reductions just to achieve borrowing. We're talking about achieved savings assisting in the process.
Thank you, councillor Murphy. Councillor Blackbra.
Thanks, chair. Like many of my colleagues, I have no problem with vision whatsoever. I was able to go to Coldicott School with the planning committee, and it is inspirational, and it's really exciting. No problem there at all. I would also say that actually, finding the five point nine five million, I think we have to just keep going with this. I think it's too late now to back out. It'll cost a lot of time, money, and, and great heartache if we suggest now that we have to go back out to re-tender. My issue however, is with money management and with failing promises. So when I initially had a chat with Simon about this, I, I had in my head about six million, and then when I went home and read it again, I, I, I would, I, I guess I hadn't grasped the enormity of this overspend. It's not just a general slippage, it's like a landslide in terms of monetary monitoring here. Councillor Hayward was talking of fifteen percent, and I want to talk of figures, because it's five point nine million we have to find, be match fund with Welsh Government. So you're looking at sort of twelve million, plus the cost of the pool that we now can't afford to build. Now, that's probably another four or five million, so you're looking at seventeen million pound overspend. That's taxpayers' money, seventeen million pounds.
Listen, listen please, and someone will come back on it.
Now that, I, I, I believe is because of the absence of a fixed cost contract right at the beginning. And then when I looked and found that actually, to pay it back, so we're looking about four hundred and seventy-six thousand a year between the two schools, the mistake was made from the local authority, but the schools have to pay that mistake. Now, I know that they can take some of the money from the maintenance budget, maintenance will go down because it's a new school. My fear that will leak into staffing costs. When we look at promises, we were promised a pool. Monmouthshire residents were promised a pool by the administration, and that was confirmed again in the last council by Liz Hacket Payne, to the question of councillor Hayward. And she said, yes, we will have a pool built, not just built, but it'll be even better. And, and I'm going to give total reassurance that the promises we have made in the past will continue. I then look at five point five about the pool. A consequence of taking the pool out of the school build and replacing with a sports hall is that the funding previously identified for the pool within the future schools programme is no longer available. And it goes on to say that any revised proposal for the pool, we'll look at that in January two thousand and seventeen. In fact, the pool is just sort of being pushed to one side or shelved until January. And you're talking about future money for these leisure centres, I don't know where this money's coming from for the leisure centres, I don't know where this money's coming from for the pool. Two things I'm looking forward in, in the future, we will have fantastic schools. The two things that I will absolutely be focusing on, when I look in the future, that there's not a space where the pool should be, that, that, that promise is kept. The second I'll be looking at will be very finely scrutinising school budgets. And I expect the local authority to absolutely support those two schools, to ensure we do not see any staffing reductions in their attempt to pay back this money because of a mistake that has been made within the local authority.
Thank you, councillor Blackbra. If I could say, we've got councillor Easton, councillor Watts, councillor Down, and then the leader councillor Fox, in that order. Unfortunately, I have to leave now, because I've got to be elsewhere in a short time, thank you.
Right, councillor Easton.
Yeah, thank you, vice chair. I'm extremely disappointed to find where we are here today, quite honestly. It seems I've got, I've come to a point of, I've got no confidence in what the program board has delivered, in lack of communication. It fits the way Monmouth tends to work, is that earlier in this year, information was passed to me by a member of the public, who seemed to be, seemed to know more than I and other members knew about, about the problems within the, the school build. Yes, we've got, we've got to go, we've got to build these two schools, but I don't think the local, us mem, we members have been fully involved in. local, us, we members have been fully involved in the communication, we haven't been allowed our views. In terms of meeting as a consultative body, I don't think we've met very often in the past few months. To suddenly find, well not to suddenly find, to find an expectation, what became, what was a rumor from a member of the public, to a five or six million pound shortfall in the build of Caldecott School, disappoints me that we as members should have been the first to know this. I then come to, I've lost the page, that's gone. I then come to the point of 2.13 in terms of selling off assets, yes, we may have assets, I don't know where they are. The second point, as far as I'm concerned, is the fact that the school will in some vague way be repaying part of the cost from energy efficiency and some maintenance costs, I can't support that. I forgot the third bit, I can't see it on here, but I don't support 2.13. I don't think that the, I don't think the program board should continue as it stands, I think the members should be more involved in making some of these basic decisions because it seems to me the program board have cut a lot to themselves and not imparted it to members. And back to the Caldecott School, there will be no gymnasium in the Caldecott School, it'll be quarter mile away from the school in the leisure centre. If there's a gymnasium in the school, that would leave more space for the public to use the leisure centre, all they're doing now is creating a problem in Caldecott where the school will have first priority for the leisure centre's gymnasium facilities and of course, the swimming pool is still there, you can't suddenly move a swimming pool. It would be nice to have another swimming pool. So I think quite frankly that, yes, we've got to somehow find our way through this morass that the program board have created, not members. And every decision that's been made here has been made on the back of the conservative majority without really listening to the opposition members and I think, I hope we listen today, the opposition members quite clearly don't support 2.13. I think I'll leave it there, in as much as the rest of it I find acceptable, doesn't taste very nice but it's acceptable, but I hope that the conservative majority on the other side support 2.13 so that it can be properly scrutinised by members, seen through by members and given the school the best chance to not lose its budget in the future. It's the children of the future we've got to consider, not leave them in debt. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Easton. Councillor Armand Watts?
Thank you, Chair. I guess my concern is, is, you know, where this leaves the other school in this, which is Chepstow School, because we've talked exclusively about Caldecott, I'm an old boy of Caldecott. I never remember it being a beach, otherwise you would have probably seen me surfing down Taffroad on my way home, but that, it was simply never anything like a beach that I can recall. I guess it's where it leaves that Chepstow School in that next, you know, the third in line, because it looks to me that there will be absolutely no money left, we will be stony broke. We're already predicting this year that there will be an increase in the deficit of budgets of many of our schools, despite what Liz said, that it will be absolute minimal amount. There's lots of talk around the authority about, you know, 13 schools potentially going into deficit budget. You cannot tell me or anybody in this room that you're going to find this additional money as if by magic, when the running cost of most schools are around about 80% from staff, it's going to affect staff. I simply don't believe it, it's not credible, but Liz has said it. Also, I think the program board should have been able to see a schedule of works right from the beginning. There's no evidence that that's happened and I recommend that the program board also see a schedule of works for all those schools and they also, and the schedule of works is provided or were updated on that schedule to all the members that have shown any interest in this, so we can know where we are, what the cost implications are, whether they're less, which I don't believe they will be, I think it's pie in the sky, or whether it's going to be more. And then we know where we are with it. I just think there's a lot of gloss to this, Chair, and, you know, I'm not buying into it, but I support that we, you know, we do spend the money.
Thank you councillor Watts. If you could switch your lights off and councillor Easton also, thank you. Councillor Down?
Thank you, Chairman. I think, as many members have already said, we are bound to agree to this recommendation. I don't see we've got any choice at all, but there are a lot about, there's a lot about this report that I simply don't understand. So, for example, we are told that inflationary pressures within the tendering market have caused part of the increase, but the inflationary pressures are 6%, we're talking about a 15% increase in the amount of money which is now required. We're told that we're dealing with an overheated market in South Wales, yet the construction industry output across the UK as a whole fell in both of the first two quarters of 2016 and preliminary figures suggest it's continued to fall since then. The construction industry is in recession now. It may be that there is a particular issue in South Wales, but our partners are not a small one man band from the back streets of one of our towns, this is a major multinational company whose revenues are three and a quarter billion pounds. So they would take, surely, surely should take a far more global view of their position. And then we're told that this increase has been caused by poor pre-tender cost information. Well, I've already explained, this is a very large multinational company with massive resources available to it. If it got the pre-contract, pre-tender cost information wrong, then to what extent are they going to contribute now to the overspend? Are they expecting us to just pick up the whole tab? So I think there are many questions which remain to be answered and for the second time today, I think this is something which ought to be referred to the audit committee for proper investigation. Like other members, I absolutely deplore the suggestion that the schools might have to pick up this, or the interest on the borrowed money from their own budgets. Unless and until someone can demonstrate to me beyond any shadow of a doubt that they will have that sort of saving in their energy costs, then I simply cannot agree to it. And finally, we come to the vexed issue of the Monmouth Pool. It is only a month ago that the cabinet member responsible for this told us that the pool was going to be built as had been promised, just a month ago. This isn't something which has arisen over a period of years, it's just four weeks. And she must have known, because this report was due to have been presented to that meeting, she must have known at that time that the, that the pool was not going to be built in accordance with the promises which have consistently been made. And I have to say, the cabinet member to make that sort of statement four weeks ago in full knowledge of the, of the facts, really makes one consider whether she ought now to consider her position. The same cabinet member that took the local authority schools into special measures and felt no shame at that, really now ought to think about where she stands.
Thank you councillor Down. Councillor Hackett Payne, please. Councillor Fox?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I'm going to pick on a couple of things and I would like to put the question which has been made several times about this is the local authority's mistake. I want a senior officer's perspective on that and I'd probably ask the chief executive if he will reflect on that piece, because I absolutely don't accept that it is the council's fault or mistake. Bob and Debbie have talked about overspends. When you overspend, surely that's when you've spent all of your money and you have none left. We have not spent this money yet. We have an option here today. We have an option here today, if members do not want to contribute to this, we can, we have the opportunity to realign our programme in line with the budget that we have. But I think everybody's expressed their wish to see this fantastic, these fantastic learning opportunities created and finished to the area, to the nature that we were expecting. They will be fantastic assets, they, we are investing for the future of generations to come. And we've heard the messages of support from young people and I know the schools themselves who have been on board with this all along and there is a massive support for this to happen. A lot's been made about the pool. I stand here as leader today, as I've said before and the chief executive has said earlier, we are committed, we've never pulled back from the, from, for the commitment to replace the pool. We will be replacing the pool, as the report signals, that will be coming forward in the report to council on that wider leisure offer, because it's not as just as straightforward as, 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 as could be discussed today. We need a specific report to help members understand just how that commitment will be delivered on, but it will be delivered on. Now, members have a choice, if you don't want to commit to 5.95 million today, you actually, you lose 12 million pounds because the Welsh Government money is dependent on us match funding. Let's go back over, the Welsh Government have been over our figures completely through them, their due diligence has been, you know, considerable, they have to, they don't give away or spend 6 million pounds lightly, they are very, very supportive of what we are having to do here. The figures we've had with the board have had have been verified, all of those things have been verified by ACOM, people who are specialists in these areas to really scrutinise and dig down to make sure that the project board can have all the assurances it needs to make these recommendations to you now. The project board and education has been something which we've collectively supported in this chamber since 2001. We've never claimed it as one party's or another, it's been collective all the way through. The project board, the offer on the project board was always to the leader of the opposition, the leader of the opposition has always been on there, but Dimitri, you declined and delegated that to Roger to continue in your stead. Roger's been absolutely a fundamental part of this, he's been a great player in that. This has never been about politics, this is about delivering the best, best opportunities for the children and young people in Monmouthshire. And we've done that fantastically in Monmouthshire since 2001, 2002. It's been difficult, challenged, but we can pride ourselves on the quality of stock, of school stock we have in this county, probably best in Wales if not in the UK. And we're going to deliver on that. Our commitment is for forced new schools. I put the question directly to the new cabinet secretary for education, Kirsty Williams, recently at WLJ meeting in Aberiron, could she enlighten us how they are planning or how they are developing their plans for BANB funding? And that was work in progress, they were working very hard on it, we're looking forward to see what they come up with. WLJ have made it very clear that capital resources are short in local government and the Welsh Government recognise the pressures there, but they do want to deliver their 21st Schools Programme and I congratulate them on that and we're right behind them on doing that. But we don't know how the funding streams will flow yet for that, but our commitment as this administration, and I hope if we come back as an administration next time, or any administration which comes back to time, will remain committed to that for-school strategy. Absolutely believe we should be. So, Mr Chairman, I would like to ask, because that's a really strong statement about that constant talk of LA, the local authority's mistake and this terminology of overspend. Chief Executive, would you like to respond to that if a chairman agrees?
I've got councillor Howard wanted to ask a question, but should we have the chief exec first or Sire? Do you want to go first? Sam, you go first.
Thank you, and I've listened with great depth into what's been said and I do agree with a lot of the statements being made and a lot of the questions which were put before senior officers. I'd like to ask to myself, the first one would be, have we actually carried out a full audit of actually the procurement process with anybody to make sure that where we are here, we're actually, we've got it right with the extra funding? I don't believe the 15% increase on the build is actually meeting everything that it should meet, 6%, 7% was said today, that is way, way off. My other question to yourselves is, you did mention Simon, something about drainage, damage to drainage, has there been major issues on the Monmouth site where actually we should not have done something, it's cost us a lot of money? And my, I'm going to move that as well, once chief executive spoke, if you'd allow me to come back in, Chairman, I'd like to move that 2.13, the second bullet point there, is removed from this document today, that the full, the audit committee is, takes hold of the full, full costings of this project and scrutinises it, the procurement process that we've got to and where we are. And I'd like that to be moved after, I have answers to my questions, please.
Point of order, Chair.
Which point of order? Who's speaking first? Councillor Watts?
Thank you, Chair. Point of order. Councillor Dimitri Petruni's already made that point, I would like to second that and I'd also like to recommend that on that point, with respect, that we have a recorded vote.
Chairman, I'm sure councillor Petruni made that point, but there was not a second there and that's been taken from the back here, we did not have a second for that. As a motion or an amendment, you always speak about it then, once it's been made, am I right in saying that? Constitutional guidelines, but there was no amendment to, we did not have a second there.
Point of order, Chair.
Which point of order?
My point of order, Chair, is regarding councillor Howard's proposed motion, I would propose an amendment that 2.13 is removed completely as a separate vote and a recorded vote is taken on 2.13 in its entirety.
Just do it then, I've just brought something forward which didn't happen from the Labour Group. Go ahead, do we have a second? Yeah, we support you on it, carry on.
Can the chief exec now speak?
I'm just trying to help on process, I think I've heard on two or three occasions during the conversation that, I certainly sense that at some point in this conversation there would be a motion which was around 2.13 and involved the audit committee. I just took the view that you were letting it flow for the moment so that all members could have a, make an input and at some point in time somebody would come back and say, now can we move that motion? So, you know, if you, trying to find the right form of phrase here, I suppose if you're not particularly precious about who moves it and who seconds it, that's going to come at some point in time. It just seemed to me, it just seemed to be easier to allow members to have their, have their say in the first round and I'm sure there'll be opportunities for members to have their say again.
All due respects, chief executive, I have stood up here many times bringing motions and I've never had a second because I've never brought the second in and I've not been allowed to take that forward, so I found the opportunity to do it under the rules of the guidelines that we use. If the Labour Party want to do that, I don't have any problem with it.
Excuse me, I, Chair, I think councillor Howard's correct here, it wasn't seconded from councillor Petruni, so it...
There was no second, it was asked for. It was never asked for. I said motion and no one said anything. Anyway, it doesn't matter, we just get on.
It really, it really doesn't matter, does it? Because it's the same thing.
Can I have a point of order, please? I'm making...
Chief executive's going to help us all.
If, if, if I may, I don't really sense that you want to have an argument about this. That said, councillor Howard is quite right, if you were minded to, I guess revert to your strict protocol, if councillor Howard moves a motion now and it's seconded now, you will commence a debate of that motion now. You will park the debate that you've been engaged in for the last period and you may or may not come back to it depending on your vote on councillor Howard's motion. The other side is to just continue to move forward and accept that at least three parties, I think, want to move effectively the same motion. Not my call on how you want to do it, but the latter seems the most organised and sensible to me.
Thank you. Councillor Greenland, will I answer that?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I'm happy to answer that. The commitment to the pool remains. The timeframe for the pool will be just about as it was. We anticipate the pool will be ready in around the middle of 2018. As far as the financing for the pool is concerned, as the report says, there will be another report coming to council with the full business case of how it is to be financed, and we anticipate that to be before, well, let's say the end of the year.
Thank you, councillor.
Could I ask a point of clarity, Chair? In answer to councillor Bob Hayward, he's talking about the pool in Monmouth. Fine, I understand exactly where you're coming from, but this 5.95 million is for the completion of two schools, not just one swimming pool. So, could we be clear on what we're talking about? My concern is that 2.13 doesn't satisfy me and that should come back, but yes, that's my point.
I think we're clear on that. Councillor Petroni?
Just to say, there's three options of possibly funding the money, and we're saying drop one of them. So, there are presumably two other options that they're giving us on the paper that they could fund this. So, I don't see, judging from some of the reaction, they were dead set on funding this from Monmouth and Callicott Schools budgets, which is really worrying, but we should drop the second point. I don't care who actually moves it, to be honest, because there's two other options to fund the money, because I get the feeling that all the opposition agree that we should find the money, which is focused on the other two options.
Councillor Haggard-Pain's going to clarify this.
Thank you. Yes, the options were there, and there was never the option to go straight to the schools. The options are to find if there's anything else that we can sell, any other property we can sell, et cetera, et cetera. So, that is the last resort, and it would not be staffing. I want to make that quite clear.
Councillor Howard, if you can now move your motion.
Chairman, I would like an answer to my two questions I put to Simon. The first one was reference to carrying out the full appraisal and the, have we brought people in to actually check into serve, making sure that we aren't overpaying them on the procurement of the, or the extra side of it. And my last question here was to do with the, I forgot, but I'll remember when you're answering that one.
Okay, thank you. So that people understand the process, the main contractor was procured under the government's Schuscap 1 framework. They, the tender went out at the end of 2013, before I came, and the, through a process of cost and quality, one of the, one of the five contractors was chosen. What they, what they actually bid on is profit and overheads, so we can fix those element of costs, and a management fee and design team to actually design the schools and develop them with us. So, that's how they use the main contractor. What we've done is regarding building up the cost plan, it's an elemental cost plan that was developed, and what that is, it breaks it down to about 60, 70 packages, so it's not the contractor giving the one line of saying, that's how much going to cost, take it or leave it. It's broken down into the elements. One of the things I tried to do at the beginning is that, understanding that, we actually went for very simple building methodologies all the way through here. So, if you tried and tested approaches using steel frame, concrete, concrete planks, brickwork, so we've looked at materials which are easy to test and available. So, again, no curves, no nice little trinkety parts of the buildings at all, it's about that element, so we've worked with them on that. What happened is in, it was June, July 2015, the tender packages go out. What that is, is there are about 60 packages per project, so you're talking about steel frame, concrete planks, they're the main contractor, all the subcontractor packages are then placed out. Each of those packages went to about four or five contractors, subcontractors, local contractors. So, for example, steel going to Morwasavusk is one of the five contractors that went there. They returned their tenders. We, the QS team, as part of the process, were part of the opening of those tenders, and they went through what was being offered as part of that programme. There's no doubt there were some quite scary responses to the costs, so we knew what was going out, we knew what was coming back, and there was a review of that. And then those elements were put against each of the 60 packages, you could start to see any build up that's coming through on that. There's no doubt that there is in the standing that there's movement within the market itself, and, you know, in south of, south of England or Wales, there's a lot of infrastructure projects which were on hand, and there's no doubt that a lot of brickies jumped off and went on to London, because there's a lot of money to be made, a pound of brick, I think I'm in the wrong trade. So, there is some fluctuations in the market itself. When we got the cost back, I couldn't understand why there was such a gap in those, as has been already mentioned, I think there was an element of the pre-tender estimates not being the right value, but also there has been a change in the market itself. To actually get some sort of sense check, in February, we asked ACOM, who Cost Consultants, to come in and look at the tender information. So, they had access to all the tenders that came in. They remeasured our building, so they remeasured the bills of quantities, and then checked it against existing schools that they had been part of, and came back with a number of recommendations. Those are in the proposal. Some of those suggested going back out to the market. If we did that, we'd have gone to Schuscap 2, where the actual profit no heads for contractors had changed from being 1.75 to about 3.6, so there was already a shift in the market there, costs of re-tendering and their view that the market was increasing. The best solution was, or one of the solutions that was, that if we could look at those costs and understand where there was elements of potential specification review. So, there was a lot of glass in the building, could we not have that much of glass? Could we look at the way glaze screens were done? Could we get some proprietary systems? So, we looked at those of them. We looked at the VE elements from that side of things. So, for example, at Monmouth Comprehensive, we had at one point, because there's a huge level change throughout the site, we had a steel frame and we had a suspended floor, a ground floor slab. It falls, the site falls about seven metres across the site. We looked at different methodologies of building that. So, what we're doing now is putting a retaining structure up, pushing soil around on site, so not taking anything off site, and reinforcing the soil so that we can actually create a plateau to build on. That's trying to challenge some of the construction methodology to see whether we can drive money out of that. Coldcot was, I mean, Monmouth is going to be built with two tower cranes. We looked at different methodologies, which using Coldcot on there, to actually try and do that from smaller cranes. So, again, looking at those elements going forward. What's, on top of that, Welsh Government, like me, wanted to understand what was going on, and Welsh Government have got all that information, so we've broken down, not given them a single figure, we've actually given them a make-up of that figure, from superstructure to abnormals, to windows, doors, everything. So, there's a cost element breakdown, which I'm more than happy that if people have a look at, they're very welcome, it's pretty heavy stuff. And I've got, we've got in our office probably about 28, 29 A4 lever arches, full of drawings, specifications and information. So, we haven't just done this on a piece of A4, take it or leave it. There's been a lot of work, and I can assure you, I'm still waiting for my summer holiday, because it has been a lot of correspondence with Welsh Government. We don't get to see the people who audited it from their point of view. We have a contact with Welsh Government, we provide the information, they have a board there that looks through that, which look at the economic side of things, they look at, is the school too big or too small? They look at costs, they benchmark against existing schools as well. So, there has been a lot of scrutiny around the figures, there's been a lot of people looking at them. There are some high ones, and there are some low ones, but a lot of them are, in a tendering perspective, they're very, very close. If there was one that was up here and one was down there, we would have chosen the more cost-effective one. That process did go through in quite detail. So, I'm confident that if anybody wants to look at those costs, if anybody, you know, half the time, they're more than welcome to sit in a room for a couple of days and do that. They've been tested, they've been tested by ACOM, they gave us recommendations, they gave us a benchmark of how we can drive some of the costs down. So, they picked up on some of the risk elements within the project and said, well, if you look to those risk elements, try and design them out early on, that pot of money that the contractors put to one side to deal with that risk, you can manage that out. They've also looked at some of the materials and said, well, actually, you know, you don't need that much glass, how about this? This is a school that uses it in a different way. So, we used their knowledge and expertise as a third party to do that. They were paid their own fee, so they weren't tied to us in any way, but to actually give us some direction, because for me, I needed to know whether that was a contractor giving a take it or leave it price, or actually there was a change in the market that was so surreal to me that we'd missed a trick somewhere or something hadn't happened. I'm not one for going over BCI figures and whatever, but someone actually did mention that when the budgets were set in 2012, 13, to the midpoint of construction. So, what they do is when they work out costs, it's the midpoint. So, for example, the brickies on, keep using brickies, the brickies on Monmouth Comprehensive when they tendered, it was going to be about 18, 19 months before they'd even gone on site, because of the length of the programme, where they sit within that programme. We wanted to, we wanted to fix their prices early so we can, we can stop any movement in there. And I'd like to have a look at some information regarding where the construction market is going, but certainly within, in around Wales and within the schools programme, like BSF was, to be quite honest, in England. If you've got a programme which is very specific and very focused and has objectives about spending money in certain areas, the market thinks they've got, they can ring fence it. So, we've had to challenge them, there's no doubt about that. Biggest litmus test for me was Welsh Government. I can assure you that they have been part of this process all the way through, and I can assure you, when it comes down to the money, they're no pushover. And literally had to explain to them every penny, but not only just in a monetary terms, but also in a prescriptive terms. They asked me the questions, where was the change? Why was change? What could you have done? What happened here and what did you do there? So, there is a diatribe next to each figure that goes into where we thought we were, where there was a change, and what the result of that change was.
Following on from that, that's very kind of you. Could I just have one supplementary to that and then the answer to the next question? The learning zones, the classrooms have not been reduced in square metres?
No, the buildings themselves, they're the same size. I think your other point was drainage, is that the one? Okay, yeah.
You did say something about some damage or some works to drainage, I just picked it up, my hearing's not what it used to be, but I just picked it up.
I think, I think on large projects like this, you pick up a lot of other things along the way, and certainly building the building where we are, one of the big problems that Monmouth Comprehensive suffered from was flooding. And the first thing we do as part of any project is actually look at why it's, what's causing that. NRW can tell us about what they're doing and their restrictions. But we sat down and had a look at drain surveys, and some of the drains were blocked or crushed, so we've had to replace a fair bit of infrastructure upon the site. So, you can't just pick up a brand-new building and plug it into existing. When you plug it in, you've got to make sure the whole system is working in place, and I think those who know the Burridge and all that around that area, they'll see quite a few, quite a bit of work that we've done on the street and around it to put the infrastructure in. To try and deal with the problems even beyond that, both sites have intenuation tanks on site. So, Coldcot, we put a brand-new intenuation tank on the site. The first letter I got from someone was saying, are we building an Asda petrol station? Because it's that large. And it's about holding the water on the site, anticipating, so some of the risks you get, whether it's on a beach or whether it's in Monmouth, hold the water so you don't get flooding in the future. So, we've not just looked about plugging the building, hoping that happens, we've tried to solve problems on the site as well.
Right, thank you, Simon. Before I ask Simon to put his, state his motion, Bob Greenland wants to say something.
Yes, Chair, I just, well, actually, what I first of all want to say is I want to thank Simon for that explanation. I think that was very useful, and members will be able to see from that the amount of work that has gone into this. And I actually want to thank Simon for what has been a particularly hard period of time in the last few months, and the fantastic job he has done. He's led the team very, very well, and frankly, had he not been here, we'd have been in a lot worse position than we are now. And so, I completely reject the references to mismanagement by councillor Blakeborough made, and I completely reject the references to broken promises. No broken promises, everything will be delivered. I wanted just to make reference to how we're going to pay for this as well. The report sets it out, but I just want to say it again. In the first instance, we will look for surplus buildings that haven't been identified so far to come forward. We will also take into account the savings on energy and maintenance that the schools will make, having been given to brand-new schools. And then we will look also at prudential borrowing, and that is the way, and it's going to be a mix of all of those, I'm sure it is, but let's not allow this ridiculous notion that we are going to take money away from the schools, which doesn't enable them to pay for school teachers. That is not the case, absolutely not the case. And we would prefer, obviously, not to be in this position, but as Simon has just pointed out, do you think the Welsh Government would have come forward and given us 50% of these costs if they thought that there was mismanagement by this council? Completely untrue. We are in circumstances which are forced by market conditions, and we have to accept it. We'd prefer not to be here, but we are, and this council and the Programme Board has committed that we will not, we will not deliver schools of lesser quality than we said we would. We will have to take the hit for that, but I'm sure, and members around are all agree on that, and I think we should move forward.
Thank you. Councillor Howard, you, do you wish to proceed with your motion? Do you wish to proceed with your motion?
Yes, please.
Can you state what it is?
Sorry, hang on. Second? Yeah, you don't know what it is yet? I might change your mind. It might be that we moved to the front. Right, 213, within the report on the recommendations, it quite clearly says, and I don't think anybody would have any problems with bullet point one, opportunity to raise additional council-owned assets for disposal, which we all know, they're there, if they're there, great. Bullet point three, inclusion within the medium-term financial plan of a revenue provision of 476 to finance the full 5.95 million by prudential borrowing over 25 years. Okay, like we did last year, I'm not happy with that one, because we're going to put the debt on to our, on to our children, but if that is deferred payment, who knows? Perhaps we can have a chat about that during the budget process. What I'm not happy with, and I've had a second there for, or I may have a second for, is prudential borrowing opportunities with annualised contributions from Callicot and Monmouth School budgets, recognising significant energy efficiency improvements and elimination of any material need for building maintenance for an extended period. I would like, I have no issue with prudential borrowing opportunities, I can leave that in, but the rest of the sentence I would like removing, and I don't have, and I can agree for that to be in there, that we're asking our schools to fund the borrowing over a period of 25 years from their budgets.
Can we make a recorded vote as well?
Recorded, yeah, yeah.
Chair, sorry, Chairman, excuse me, Chairman. If you want a recorded vote, members, nine of you need to show you want a recorded vote, please. So, we've got three, six, nine, so we're there. So, we'll have a recorded vote, Chairman.
Yes, councillor Murphy wants to say, yes.
Sorry, I feel I'm going to have great difficulty in voting this way, because I think members are completely misconstruing what is being said in that third bullet point. And this really, really worries me. And this really, really worries me. I think councillor Greenland probably clarified what I was going to ask Simon, that schools have a budget which is based upon their floor area and they have certain allowances for heating. In a brand-new school, and one that's environmentally well-designed, those costs will be significantly less, one would hope, unless we've gone wrong. So therefore, this continual reference to removing from the teaching budget, to me, doesn't make sense. Now, have I got that right? That there is the allowance that is within school budgets for heating, and they will see a saving in that, and that's where the impact will be.
Both councillor Murphy and the chief exec want to refer to this.
What I'm about to say in no way challenges the motion that councillor Howarth's put down. That's his prerogative to do so. Councillor Smith, you're, I believe, accurate in the direction that you're going. To offer context, and that's all I'm doing, to aid you with your voting decisions, give or take, I think the cumulative budgets of probably Caldicott and Monmouth every year are about 12.6, 12.7 million, they're abouts. So that's the order of magnitude of the recurrent revenue budget. Every school in Monmouth, their funding, and that key word is funding, not cost or income or savings, their funding is determined by the aggregation of about, well, probably 30, 35 different sub-formular. Most of those sub-formular are related to pupil numbers. So the most significant aspect of funding that goes to every one of your schools every year is on the basis of pupil number. And I guess, as you've known since 1988, the Education Reform Act, if you're six in one school or six in another school, exactly the same amount of funding goes to that school. If you're 15 in one school or another school, it will be a different level of funding for the age group, but exactly the same number goes to each school. They're around 20%, I'm using that as an example, it's not too far off, but it won't be accurate. Around 20% of school funding is determined on the basis of premise factors. So just by way of example, and again, this is not a formula, I'm using it just to give you an example. Let's just focus on energy, okay? Let's say we've got a school that's really energy efficient, one that's pretty average, and one that's pretty poor. There will be factors in that formula that recognise those differences. So if you're really, really energy efficient, you will receive less funding through the formula than you will do so if you are really, really not energy efficient. And effectively, that's a function of age and condition of property. So I think the point councillor Smith that you're trying to make, just for information to other members, is forget savings for a moment, and sorry, school representatives, I'm not saying this reflect, but if we could just assume at the moment that Monmouth and Caldicott are at the weaker end of fuel efficiency, and if you've ever been to any of the buildings, you will probably recognise that's the case. If three is poor, one is really, really good, two of our schools are going to convert from being threes to ones. Therefore, they will actually attract less funding in future years when these new schools are built. So actually, we will distribute less funding to those schools. I don't know what you're shaking your head for, that's fact, absolute fact. Okay, in a moment, if you'd just let me finish. So to ensure an equity across all schools, again, in my little example, every school that's a one receives the same unit of funding for energy. Every school that's a two, every school that's a three. So there will be changes to the funding that flows to these schools because they have now a different premise, okay? Regardless of whether you support or don't support councillor Howarth's motion, that will be the case. Because that's the way that the funding of schools works legally. Does that help councillor Smith in the point that you were trying to raise?
Councillor Murphy.
Point of clarity, Chair.
Thank you, Chair.
Point of clarity, Chair. Point of clarity.
It's a point of clarity, Chair.
Point of clarity.
You're trying to raise a point of clarity, Chair.
Point of clarity on the chief executive's comments.
If you can sit down, please, we're listening to councillor Murphy first, and then we'll listen to your point of clarity.
Thank you, Chair. And can I start off by thanking councillor Smith for her perception here. She's absolutely right. All this says is that it gives delegated authority for us to use a combination of those points. And what would happen with regards to the school's budget is that the money freed up, under the terms that the chief executive has just mentioned, that that money freed up could be used in those circumstances whenever we find that we need it to enable us to finance this. If bullet point two of 213 comes out, then I think everybody already knows what I'm going to say. Will you please tell me which services you want me to stop so that I can fund it? This is surplus money which is currently going to schools, which won't under the formula. And therefore, we will be looking at how that can be used.
We have, excuse me, we have a motion, can we have a debate on the motion? Councillor Down, do you want to debate it?
Just to be clear, Chairman, if, as the chief executive rightly, I think, suggests, Monmouth and Caldicott schools will receive less money because they are more fuel-efficient, more energy-efficient, then in order to generate that 476,000, the total school's budget will have to reduce by that amount. Is that correct? There will be a cut in the school's budget.
Yes, if the chief exec can just clarify that.
Councillor Down, I think, is absolutely accurate. If, at the level of total, at quantum, if the, and I was just, if I may, Councillor Down, just stay with energy, there are other factors, but I think this is just using it to make a point. And I'll put arbitrary figures in just to make the point as well. If by having two new schools replacing two old schools, the energy bill reduces by, let's just say, 50,000 pounds reflect, the idea would be that that 50,000 pounds comes out of the quantum of all school funding and is used to partially service the funding shortfall that goes forward in this programme.
Thank you. councillor Easton, do you have something to say?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Therefore, on the basis of the chief executive's comments and intervention by councillor Smith, the word is used from Caldicott and Monmouth school budget, which implies that their budgets in the future would have money taken from them.
Exactly.
What you're saying is quite, it sounds quite right. They would not have that budget to start with. So that second bullet point is written wrongly. It's given the impression to me that you're going to take it from the school. And in fact, the school will not get that budget because it won't need the budget.
I think that's a fair point, yeah.
Councillor Petroni.
Chairman, that was my point. It says from Caldicott and Monmouth school budget. But the second point, councillor Murphy said, well, you know, how else would we pay, what services we've got to cut? So the other two aren't options then? Because the way it's written, the way it's presented, implies there's a package, and there's three packages, and you've got to determine which package is the most suitable. That's how it's all written and portrayed. Rather than, it appears to me that actually, you said word contribution, or three might be necessary, but it's not written like that.
Thank you.
It isn't, the best package.
Councillor Murphy wants to come back on that.
Can I read it, please, Chair? The last part of, well, I'll reread you all of 213. Agree to give delegated authority to the cabinet member of resources in consultation with the chief officer of resources and the head of finance to determine, and this is the bit, the best funding package for the council contribution of 5.95, having regard to, so it's a combination as we see fit according to the circumstances at the time and the amount of money that we can use for internal borrowing, and all those other factors that I've said before in this debate, but most people don't seem to have been listening. We will use the absolute minimum of those funds to do it in the best possible way.
Thank you, councillor. councillor Fox.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. I'm not going to continue the debate on that, it's been proposed and seconded. I'm going to move that we put it to the vote, and I think it's a, believe it's a recorded vote. We take this motion, Mr. Chairman.
We now vote on the motion.
Can I move, Chair?
Chairman, if I can, can I take over here, please? Yeah, okay, thank you very much. Okay, members, I'm going to call your name. We're well used to this now, and you will say for or against, please.
Sorry, can we just have clarity what the motion is?
Yes.
That we're playing on this.
Yeah. Clarity on the motion is this, councillor Greenland, I think, that we are removing point two of recommendation 2.1.3. So we are removing beginning prudential borrowing opportunities and ending with for an extended period. So that's just what this motion is about. Council will determine whether or not that stays in the recommendations of the report.
Excuse me, I don't think councillor Howarth agrees with that. Can you read out what you want?
I think what it should read is, is prudential borrowing opportunities will be explored, and that is it.
Well, sorry, Chairman, I don't want to prolong this. This almost seems as if it's too long.
We have to go to the CCTV.
But if you've got prudential borrowing opportunities, how are they going to be financed? It's probably a matter for joy, but...
Well, frankly, if that, excuse me, excuse me, can we have some order? If that's what councillor Howarth's proposal and motion is, that's what it is.
Chair, can I move, please?
It may be mad, but that's what councillor Howarth wants.
And I'm not mad, let me show you.
Do you have a second, Dan? You've had that. We'll go to the vote, and I will hand over to the motion officer.
Thank you, Chairman. First up then, councillor Petroni. Councillor Blakber. Councillor Barrows. Councillor Chapman. Councillor Clark. Councillor Crooks, not here. Councillor Dovey. Councillor Down. Councillor Easton. Councillor Doug Edwards. Councillor Ruth Edwards. Councillor David Evans, not here. Councillor Farley. Councillor Fox. James George, not here. Councillor Greenland. Councillor Gappy. Councillor Hacket Payne. Councillor Hayward. Councillor Hickman. Councillor Hickinson's left. Councillor Hobson. Councillor Howard. Councillor Howarth. Councillor David Jones. Councillor Penny Jones. Councillor Sarah Jones, not here. Councillor Jordan. Councillor Marshall's not here. Councillor Murphy. Councillor Powell. Councillor Prosser. Councillor Smith. Councillor Strong. Councillor Taylor, here. Councillor Armond Watts. Councillor Pauline Watts, here. Councillor Webb. Councillor White's not here. Councillor Williams. Members, the result of the recorded vote is thus. There were 12 members for and 20 members against. Therefore, that motion is defeated. And, sorry, Chairman, I was going to say, shall we now go to the recommendations in the report?
Oh, I was going to say that. We shall now go to the recommendations in the report. We're not invited. Show of hands, for? For the substantive motion now, for the recommendations in the report.
Chair, a point of clarity here, it don't make sense. Oi, oh, hang on now. Point of clarity, we have just voted, or you have just voted against our motion. We're now being asked to vote for that motion through 2.13, which we've already voted against. I can't vote against, I can't vote for 2.13 in its entirety. I can vote for the two bullet points, but not the second one.
Fine, it's just been passed.
No, I won't vote against the motion, no. It's part of it.
Motion, officer, have we just voted on that or not?
I just want 2.13 excluded from this. Vote for it separate.
Yeah, we've just voted on that, Chairman, and the recommendations in the report were passed.
Well, that's the end of the meeting, gentlemen, members. Thank you very much for giving me an easy ride at the end, Chair.